I'd like to call a meeting of the Anchorage School Board order on five o'clock, six o'clock on May 21st. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I will apologize in advance. I have a lot of fluid in my ears and I'm having a hard time hearing. Encourage everyone to speak closely into the microphone in a loud voice. And I may have to ask people to repeat things occasionally. I apologize for that. We do have an unusual meeting tonight in that we are going to start with awards and right, we will start with our flag salute, land acknowledgement. If everyone will turn and face the flag, I'll ask our student representative to lead us in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America. And through the republic of which it stands, I am engaged in the work of the individual.
Thank you. And Mr. Pack, if you will do our land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denali people of Upper Cook Inlet. Thousands of years, the Denali people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. AST is committed to diversity and inclusion, and is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
And would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the agenda. Without objection, it has been adopted. Reports from our student representative, Mr. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually just came back from my school's graduation, so a lot of notions flooding right now. I think that there were a lot of proud parents, a lot of proud friends and supporters there. And I think that this kind of brings me to the African proverb that it takes a whole village to raise a child. Just want to say, I think I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of students when I say thank you to the teachers, thank you to the administrators, thank you to the parents, and thank you to everyone who remains supportive in our students and our graduates this year. And thank you, AST, for being that village. I don't really have anything much else to report, just a lot of thank yous and just to another year.
Thank you for your service as a student representative. We deeply appreciate that. We do not have a military representative tonight, so we will skip over the military report. That brings us to section C, recognitions of, and we are awarding Denali awards this evening. We've not rehearsed this. To Alaskans, Denali means great ones. And the Anchorage School District is proud to have employees that display greatness in the areas of achievement, service, and dedication. This is the highest award offered by the district. Each spring supervisors submit nominations, and a panel of AST employees selects a number of employees and teams of colleagues that demonstrate outstanding commitment to the district's mission of educating all students for success in life. There are three different categories for Denali award: classified, certificated, and team. We are honored to have three individuals and one group who will be recognized tonight. In addition to being recognized this evening, each winner will receive a print from the AST Fine Arts Studio. Ari Afulu, and I apologize if I did not get that right. Before we recognize the Denali Award winners, we would like to recognize our student artist, Ari Afulu. Ari is an eighth grader at Central Middle School, and her art was selected by the Denali Awards Panel, be gifted to this year's winners. Ari chose to write a poem to be read as her bio tonight, and she may not be in the audience, but if she is, you come forward. Don't see her rising, so I don't think she's here right now. As the warm air breezes through my hair, the sun softly kisses my face. In this place where I escape, is where my dreams and thoughts sway back and forth like flowers. I find freedom. Our community partner at Blaine's Arts has generously donated a $50 gift card to recognize Ari for her artistic contributions to tonight's event. And she's not here to come up and receive it right now, but we will make sure that she gets that. We'll begin with the classified award. You will please come forward, Chrissy Gordon and Keong Levens. For the first time in recent history, we have a tie in the classified category as two individuals received a perfect score from our panel of judges. We'll begin with Chrissy Gordon, who is near and dear to my heart, as I worked with her and I attest to her qualification. Her background, I worked with Chrissy for 14 years at Golden View and saw the kind of excellence that she brings to the job every single day. And I think she probably had something to do with the fact that I have a shirt with the Denali Award on it as well from a long, long time ago. Do they still give out shirts? Sorry. Chrissy Gordon, Administrative Assistant at Golden View Middle School, was enthusiastically nominated for this award by Assistant Principal Jason White, who described her as someone who is the first one to school every day, knows everything about the building, has a strong relationship, has strong relationships, and promotes a high level of respect with staff. Chrissy has been an invaluable member of the Anchorage School District for 40 years, starting at Bartlett and Clark, then serviced before transitioning to Golden View when the school first opened its doors 27 years ago. Chrissy's dedication.
That's my piece, because I've worked with Chrissy as well. So let me have my piece. Thank you. Chrissy's dedication and work ethic are truly commendable. She has consistently gone above and beyond in her role. Chrissy has a master mentor certificate and has been mentored to many staff in the district. In his nomination packet, Assistant Principal White said, "Chrissy's hard work and dedication have been instrumental in the success of Golden View." Congratulations, Chrissy, on behalf of the Anchorage School Board for being recognized as a 2024 Denali Award recipient.
All right, my turn now. Our next classified winner is also an early bird in her building. Congratulations to Keong Levens, the beloved English language learner tutor at Government Hill Elementary School. She, yes, now's a good time for applause. All right. She arrives at work by 7:30 a.m. every morning to make sure she is prepared for the day and to be available to support wherever she is needed in the school. Her nominator, Government Hill Elementary School Principal Julie Santaya, said Ms. Levens is a forward thinker and is always one step ahead in planning her duties and keeping others on track as well. She works collaboratively with teaching staff to develop intervention plans in both reading and math. Ms. Levens welcomes, oh, we're not done, Marco. Ms. Levens welcomes all incoming staff and teachers and shares information about the school culture, helps find curriculum materials, et cetera. Ms. Levens always has a smile and is ready and willing to go the extra mile for all school events. She has been at Government Hill for 24 years and has a wealth of knowledge about school traditions. She knows all of the school's students and their families. She is a very friendly and welcoming, she is very friendly and welcoming. Ms. Levens is an active participant in many after-school activities such as cross-country running and tutoring, and willingly assists even when she is not designated as a staff member in charge. She is present at almost every after-school PTA activity that serves the school community, including ice skating parties, pumpkin carving, and the winter carnival. Congratulations, Keong, on behalf of the Anchorage School Board for being recognized as a 2024 Denali Award recipient.
The next category is a certificated award. Katie Bonita, please come forward. Longevity is a common theme for our group of winners this year. As our certificated winner has been in her role for more than 20 years. Katie Bonita is the longest-standing vocational coordinator at the Adult Community Transition ACT Program. She has coached students with disabilities to build work, charity skills, and gain and keep jobs for more than two decades. Her nominator, ACTU Principal Joy Barco, shared that Katie is a visionary who can facilitate any dream or plan to become a reality. Katie takes on projects far beyond her job description and makes them fun and meaningful.
Not only does she teach students while on the job, she interviews students, teaches professionalism, ensures safety and compliance, supervises job site supervisors, hosts student events, facilitates student activity schedules and connections with outside agencies, and helps students secure paid summer interns. But she teaches and coaches students to walk away from the ACT program with a real-world job. She's truly that magical. Please join us in thanking Katie Bonita, our certificated Denali Award winner.
Finally, I'd like to call up our team winners. The Kincaid Elementary School Life Skills Team. Kathy Chapman, Winneka Clark, Carly Colony, Jerson Darman, Travis Duke, Jenny Gay, Jenna Gully, Belinda Hillman, Lindsay Janda, Shana McCorky, Lacey McGrew, Atunet Ahn, Trina Terry, and Kennedy Thatcher. The Kincaid Life Skills Team provides services to our most vulnerable population of students. Working as paraprofessionals and teachers in this program is challenging work. Care often includes feeding, changing, lifting, moving, and assisting communication. It requires an amazing amount of patience, support, and teamwork. This team was nominated by Kincaid Elementary Principal Wendy Zoria to recognize their tremendous team effort. Principal Zoria's nomination emphasized this team as dedicated and reliable. When teachers or paraprofessionals are out due to illness or when positions are vacant, the whole team steps up to do the extra work. Kincaid has two unfilled paraprofessional positions open most of the school year. The Kincaid Life Skills Team pulls together every day to provide the best services to their students. They are frequently heard asking how they might help or assist one another. While it can be easy to complain about the situation regarding staffing and extra work, this team continues to be a positive influence on the overall school climate.
In addition to working collaboratively to support the intensive needs of the student population, they have worked alongside their general education colleagues to provide inclusive opportunities for students in the Life Skills Program. This year, every student in the Life Skills Program was assigned to a general education classroom. Paraprofessionals supported the students in Life Skills to attend field trips, special classroom activities, and school assemblies. The team was instrumental in supporting the school's goal to improve inclusive practices. At Kincaid, inclusive, inclusion means that all students are welcomed, invited, accepted, and valued. Principal Zoria said there is a stronger unity between programs due to the willingness and support of the Life Schools Program. Please join me in recognizing the Kincaid Elementary Life Skills Team as our Denali Award winner in the team category.
The administration invites the board and everyone in attendance to help recognize and celebrate Chrissy Gordon, Keong Levens, Katie Bonita, and the Kincaid Elementary School Life Skills Team as the 2024 Denali Award winners for the example of excellence they set for the entire Anchorage School District community. Please join us in the atrium for refreshments, photos, and a celebration of the 2024 Denali Award winners.
You can now make your way out into the atrium.
Thank you.
I normally do have something of an introduction. I don't have that with me tonight, so we'll let you begin your presentation.
I'm Eric Pistey, the Senior Director for Elementary Education.
Nicole Somerville, Director of Teaching and Learning for the Elementary Division.
Amanda Bar, the K-12 Math Proficiency Coordinator.
Great, and from here, we typically open it up to board questions and we can begin with perhaps some how questions and then we'll evolve from there.
Member Bowman?
Yes, thank you. And I did, I thought I I emailed you the conversation, the opening conversation, but I'll get it to you at some point. Anyway, thank you, guys. One of the things, and I apologize because I did not send my questions in ahead of time. But just so that we, the public understands what we mean by growth, math growth, as opposed to achievement. Could you start with that clarification, please?
Absolutely. I think it's a great place to start. So just kind of really quickly, MAPGrowth is an assessment. It's called a norm assessment. So the purpose of it is to compare students' results with the broader population of students, for example, at the same age group or grade level. And so thinking back to when we were kids and we would get those California Achievement Tests, you would get a percentile in the mail and it said, you know, sixty-fifth percentile means that you're achieving a little bit better than sixty-five percent of the population. And then on the opposite side of that curve, thirty-five percent are achieving at a higher rate than you. So that's the achievement side. So MAP has an achievement score, but it also has a growth score. So regardless of your achievement level, it also has a normal distribution of growth. So even though a student might be performing at the twentieth percentile, an achievement may be considered to be struggling, they could be growing at the seventieth percentile, which means that they would be growing at a rate that's better than seventy percent of the entire population. And so what the really nice thing about MAP is it balances both achievement and growth so that you can recognize the achievement levels, but you can also determine are kids moving in the right direction based on growth.
Great. Thank you for that. And so this, so the current goal, though, we're looking at is the one that is our new goal, right? Because we met, we met the target in the first one. So just wanted to make that clarification. And so when we look on page four, it's so we're obvious, we're on track to go from twenty-nine point four to thirty-nine percent by twenty seventy-eight. So I want to say that seems low to me. But how differently should I think about that?
It's a really good question and it's, you have to wrap your head around the fact that we're looking at a subset of the population. So we're looking at only students who are achieving below the fortieth percentile. So we have to start with that. So the other piece is when we look at what we call catch-up growth, that means kids are growing at the seventy-fifth percentile. That's the top twenty-five percent, the top quarter of all students in the nation. And so when you think about an assessment like this, in a typical large group of students, twenty-five percent of the overall population would be growing at the seventy-fifth percentile or higher. So while that might appear low, if it, but it just by looking at it in the first look, you're, you're taking a smaller group and you're saying there, this group is going to forty percent of that group is going to be performing at the seventy-fifth percentile, which is really the top twenty-five percent. And so you have to, it's a little tricky to kind of wrap your head around. We would definitely want to see that higher, but we also want it to be attainable. And just like we did last year, I mean, as we grow and move, you know, there's nothing that says we're not going to be pushing further and harder as we go along.
Great. Thank you. I just think it's important that we know that the public understand what it is that we're discussing and looking at. So thank you.
Member Watson?
Yeah, I appreciate that question and response. I think I know I continue to value growth because it demonstrates the value that's added by the district, by a school, by a classroom, right? You can have high entering proficiency and low growth. You can have high entering proficiency and high growth. You could have low entering proficiency and no growth, and that will be bad. And you can have low entering proficiency and high growth. And again, so that growth is what's happening through the dedication of our staff, through the support of parents, through the commitment of the student itself, everybody working in tandem. So I really appreciate the chance to recognize, I think, what's an extraordinary achievement. And, you know, I'm I am interested. I didn't submit any question ahead of time. But how is ASD's rate of growth? What does that look like when you compare counterparts nationwide?
It's a great question. So we, I do, we do analyze that. We're kind of right in the pocket. In other words, we're, we're fairly typical in terms of our growth being representative of a lot, the larger population.
When you account for our demographics, when you account for
Right, and exactly. And just to clarify, you know, when you think about a classroom, a classroom is a small group of kids. So you could see high variability there. As you start to expand to a school and then you expand to a district where twenty thousand students are taking an assessment, then, then the distribution of all of those kids is typically going to mirror the larger population as a whole. I mean, that's just part of the way normed statistics work.
I'm going to take liberty while the president is not looking my way of asking another question. I want to say that recently, maybe in an inside ASD, and in some sort of an ASD communication, there was, there was an item that looked like Team ASD had gone into some high-performing classrooms. And I don't remember if it was reading or math, maybe it was both. Can I ask you to draw out some themes for, for what you're finding in highly effective classrooms?
Sure, I, I'm happy to answer that. So yeah. Sure. I, I'm happy to answer that. So yes, we did. It was a small subset. We looked at high-growth classrooms across the district. This was in primary reading classes, kindergarten through third grade. And so it really is a different assessment, right? It's based on those foundational reading skills. Do you still want me to?
I guess maybe it's a thank you for clarifying that I remembered something about reading and not math. But if I could ask you to use your expertise from what you learned in that lens, are there similar things that may hold true for high math growth?
Sure. I, I mean, I'm happy to speak to that. That was, you know, our team took that on and we did a collaboration with mental health and teaching and learning. So that we were looking at classroom, classrooms that were really moving students and in particular, students who were struggling. And the goal of combining those three teams was to really look for common themes and patterns across classrooms, across programs. So neighborhood programs, title programs, immersion, charter schools, regardless of which curriculum was being used. So we weren't really curriculum, like in terms of the type of curriculum or the brand of curriculum, we weren't focused on that. We were looking at more sort of ubiquitous or common practices. And we did have some themes. For, for example, number one, there were strong, warm relationships in every single classroom that we visited. There were very clear routines and procedures. Students knew what was expected, both academically, socially, and behaviorally. Teachers across the board held extremely high expectations. They believed in that they were going to grow these students no matter what. Then from an academic, from an instructional side, there were high levels of checks for understanding. In other words, they were clear about what students were supposed, were expected to learn. They checked constantly and they provided immediate feedback in every step, no matter where that student was at. And, and so those, those were, those were some of those very common themes that we found in every single one of those high-growth classrooms.
Oh, still have my mic on. Okay, thank you. So when we're looking, let's see, which slide am I on? Slide, page five, the catch-up growth by grade level. So except for, seems like I mean, I've, I've noticed several schools, mostly elementary, I've noticed them putting out really congratulatory and, you know, really notes to families emphasizing that, you know, the, the growth that the kids have made. And, and I appreciate that because you know, achievement is important and that is how we currently universally gauge how good or not good we are. I do think that having that growth aspect is really, really important. So when I look at this slide, these are all grades three through eight, and that's a total number of kids that were tested each time. So like in, in third grade, we tested ninety-six point nine percent of the students in the third grade. Is that correct?
So that, that ninety-six percent is when you take a look at the kids in the fall, there was two thousand nine hundred forty-seven. There were two thousand eight hundred sixty-one tested in the spring. So ninety-six point nine one percent represents the percent of kids that tested both. Because in order to, to determine growth, you have to have two events. You have to have a beginning and ending event to determine growth.
Okay. All right. So the twenty-four point eight percent is the fall to spring.
So, so what that means is of those students that tested in both windows, again, remember, we're looking at the kids that started below the fortieth percentile. So, right, when, when we're talking about changing or improving our overall achievement, we're focusing on catching kids up that need support. So we're focusing on kids that were scoring below the fortieth percentile. And of all of those kids in that grade, twenty, well, the overall third through eighth, thirty-one point four six percent of those kids made catch-up growth at the seventy-fifth percentile or higher. So, so of the kids that were struggling, thirty-one and a half percent grew in the top quartile of growth in the nation.
Wow. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. So staying with that slide, so I have a third grader who started kindergarten on Zoom. So I'm able to place that moment very particularly in my mind, along with a lot of other parents. This year's third graders had the lowest rate of catch-up growth. To what extent are COVID era learning, lost opportunities to learn, possibly still in those early foundational sort of like unbasic sense of numbers or classroom practices? Is that a part of what we're seeing in maybe a difference between this year's third graders and, you know, this year's eighth graders who were in fifth grade at that point in time? And had had, you know, four solid years of school experiences behind them.
I think some of it is definitely some of the COVID, the early numbers work that's done in kindergarten is so oral and hands-on. And when you're on a computer, you don't necessarily have that. I think we also need to recognize that in third grade, it's the first year that they've ever taken any kind of an assessment online. And so we also want to keep that into consideration, that this is a relatively long test. I think there's like fifty questions usually. There's reading involved in the questions. They have to be able to read the question, do the math on a whiteboard, and then type in their answer or select a correct answer. So it's, it's some of both. And so I would also hesitate to say that it's learning loss versus just learning how to take the assessment their first time through. So it could be a variety of different reasons, but there was significant growth still. And again, this population of third graders is our kids that were below level to begin with. And so it could just be that they're, they're still catching up and they're getting their basics of math before they start applying math. The same is within reading that you have your basics of reading before you can really apply it. And so we see some differences.
So would this cohort in particular benefit from additional resources in coming years? I mean, they will, this year's third graders will be next year's fourth graders, which makes them eligible for a PTR plus one if we don't receive any one-time funding from the state of Alaska, right? Because there's a PTR plus one for grades four through twelve essentially on the table based on our board amendment. So I guess not knowing what funding streams are going to arise as things stand in June. I'm feeling like, gee, next year's fourth graders, maybe a PTR plus one would not be so good for them. I guess it's not a question.
Yeah, I, I mean, and, and I'm just going to, you know, my math background, I, I just want us to remember correlation versus causation. You hear me say that a lot and, but it's, but there's no doubt. I think the, the broader message is, you know, we need to watch, watch these individual kids data and we need to keep track of that within the, within the school, within the classroom. And, and just look at that over time and to address how we allocate resources, time and support within our schools. So more broadly, it's, it's difficult for me to answer that.
And I wanted to ask to, to be sure, we are talking about a cohort when we're talking about this improvement. We're looking, say, this year's third graders, next year's fourth graders, the year after, fifth graders? We're not talking about improvements in third grade and then more improvement in third grade the year after that.
Right. So, so this particular data looks from fall to spring. So it's within one current academic school year, right? So, so when we're looking at the below fortieth percentile, we look at right at the beginning of the year when they take that assessment and they have a full academic year of instruction and we're looking at the assessment they just took. So, so we're not tracking, this data does not track a grade to grade to grade. It's looking about one academic year, what's happening in that school and that classroom for that child.
Member Wilson.
I've had a lot of kids in my home over the years and all of them could probably repeat what I tend to say often is I'm, I'm looking for positive progress. Always looking for positive progress and I'm very happy. I, I think we, we should celebrate positive progress. So I'm, I'm very excited that, that I'm seeing positive progress.
Mr. Chair.
Member Bowman.
So moving ahead, I know I saw some goals or whatever the next steps are. What are the, so what are principals and staff prioritizing when it comes to math in these grades? Is everybody using the curriculum? Do the teachers have the supports that they need? Because I don't know that money is important, but I also know other things, structure is important as well. Can anybody talk a little bit about that?
One of the things that I think is really been contributing to success from the classroom piece has been our PLC models from systemically that we have, teachers are digging into standards and looking at common formative assessments and able to really dive into building that collective efficacy around math instruction. When, when they're focused on those math rules and able to really dig in. And I think we're going to continue to see the positive trends in our data just from that initiative alone. I think we also have the advantage of having really robust evidence, research-based curriculum that we're using with students and common conversations around data that have really, just in my time here, become more of a focus. And I think having everyone having these conversations around how are our students doing? How are we moving them? What are we doing when students haven't attained their potential yet? I think is really going to continue to make a significant impact on our data.
And I guess I didn't hear you talk about the multi tiers of support. Because I think that part is crucial. We're not holding kids back because he's forty percent. The kids below the fortieth percentile is not, it needs some extra.
Correct. We've got a lot of intentional work behind this specific population, providing access to core curriculum and making sure that students are additionally getting supports that they need, again, tied to the standards, but not, not removing students from accessing grade level instruction and really the impacts that that has towards moving them towards their
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chair, we talked about how ASD stacks up with MAP growth nationally. Is there any difference when we look at just Alaska totals? Are we still in the pocket for as a, for one of the large districts in the states in general?
That's a great question. I would have to dig into it. Generally speaking, we're on the topper, excuse me, the topper, the top half. We're, we're above the average when it comes to the state of Alaska. I would have to look into it in more detail in terms of the other districts. But generally speaking, we're, we're definitely above the average in the state of Alaska. I would also just want to just to mention also, you know, this fortieth percentile is not like a magic number. I just want to remind folks, fortieth percentile is low average. And so we use it as a dipstick. It's like an indicator to say, hey, pay attention. Might there be something else going on in early warning system? The trick is, is that it's not a proficiency, right? It doesn't say that you're meeting grade level proficiency. It's a normed assessment. And so there's a bit of a rub there. You know, there's a difference between that. And so I just want, from, from parents, when your student is performing at the fortieth percentile, it means they're in low average. I think that's an important point.
Mr. Chair.
Just a follow-up note, if I might. Yep, thank you. I appreciate the answering the question. I didn't send it ahead of time, so certainly didn't mean to spring it on you. Alluding to what was said earlier, I think it's, this data in particular is a good, seems to be a good indicator for the value added that our district provides. I personally would propose we try to avoid as a state comparing cohorts of children against one another. I don't think it's a great exercise, but for better or for worse, folks who allocate our funding appreciate doing that as a means to demonstrate value added before they appropriate dollars. So I think we need to continue looking through that lens regardless of our own preference. So appreciate that.
Member Higgins. Member Higgins.
Thank you. Yeah, I look at these statistics and I, I see them every time and you've got pretty big disposition between different groups. And, and I went to the National School Board Association National Conference here a year and a half ago. And at least in some districts, that, that some of the groups that at the bottom are at the top in their districts and they're doing different things. And I look at that and I say, okay, if we continue to do the same thing we've always done, we're going to get these same results. And when I first got on the school board back in two thousand eight, okay, a long time ago, none of these students went to school at that time. But in two thousand eight, and, and the school board had this view and the administration promoted a rising tide raises all ships. It doesn't work that way. We have got some kids that need more attention, different types of approach. And I don't know what we're doing. I got asked this yesterday in a community meeting. What are we doing differently? How are we reaching out and recognizing that we have low areas of these performers? I like the idea is being reported this way, very supportive of it because we, we should be transparent and it's a problem. Identifying the problem and doing something about it is two different things. I don't know what we're doing or what we should be doing to try to bridge this academic achievement gap. It's a big problem. Other districts have done it. They've put resources and they've done different things. Some of them have been very successful. What are they doing differently? What are we not doing that we should be adding to the plate here so that we can address that issue? We raised that, that one of the biggest gap, we're going to get higher results for everything. That's where we got the most opportunity for, to, to affect the success of the school districts is in that area. And we're being the most diverse school system in the country. We have the biggest need to address that issue. So I just wondering from your perspective, what are we not doing? How can we do something different? And what are other school districts doing to help these kids be successful? Because right now this is not being successful. And, and to me, with this type of gap and with this type of low growth.
Well, I'll take a stab. So first of all, number one, I just want to acknowledge that there is growth being made in here. And this is a really specific subset of data. But, you know, when we look at school districts around the nation that are achieving the highest growth for students in need, the thing that I want to emphasize is, is it's often not about curriculum. It's about those high-leverage practices in every single classroom. And so, you know, with our PLC introduction this year, we just started that. Really, that is about using your assessment data. And I'm not talking about this data. I'm talking about the quizzes that we do and every in-the-moment opportunity that, that kids demonstrate, whether they understand or don't understand what's happening in that moment, that particular skill or understanding. But those, those districts that are making the largest gains are data-driven down to this classroom level. Each and every teacher is watching those kids. They, they're clear about what they need to learn. They, and they are addressing it both immediately as well as through their assessments. And so that's an ongoing process and, and, you know, Mr. Visti can talk a little bit about our PLCs that we're sort of, we're just introducing, but that is the intent of that.
It, it sounds a lot like the rising tide raises all ships is what I just heard. Maybe I'm wrong on that. We've got twenty-eight percent of whites that are below and we've got seventy percent Alaska natives. And look at these numbers here and I'm saying to myself, wait a minute. The idea that we're doing high performance and it's not bringing everybody up, but it's leaving some behind. I, I, I just feel like there's a gap here. I remember about ten years ago, probably more like twelve, fifteen years ago, we looked at the charter schools. And our highest performing charter school relative to the school district was the Alaska Native Charter, Charter School. Because those kids compared to Alaska natives in the regular school system was doing much better. They were doing something different. They had association here. We saw it with the workshop the other, last year that when they're associated with the culture, when they've got this, you got better mental health and better academics. We're missing something here in regards to this. And it's not just one level, in my, in my opinion. I have trouble buying that, that it's, if we do something better for everybody, they're going to catch up. They're not catching up. And I think there is something that other school districts have done. They put an emphasis on it. I know North Dakota did a big thing with last, with American Indians, where they just worked on the culture and those scores went up. So in, in line with this, it's just, to me, I think, I feel like we're missing something. And the fact that this academic score is there is not due to the fact that students can't learn. I know we heard that in twenty sixteen, when they lowered the academic scores for those kids and said, oh, they can't grow with eighty percent of a year because they can't all be Michael Jordans. I never want to hear that again. But, but I won't forget that. Now, we move to But I won't forget that. Now we move to Council Great City School Studies that said some teachers and administrators don't believe all kids can learn. I'm not forgetting that either. I want to see what we can do to improve these outcomes for these kids. It's time that we come up with some type of plan, look at some resource out there to say the academic achievement gap in the, in the most diverse school district in the country should be addressed. We, we really owe it to those kids, large numbers, and there's a lot of benefit if we can do it.
Member Bowman.
Just, I, I think just to remind the board that we will have this level of a discussion when we have our retreat. Because this, when we talk about our goals, this is an interim goal. This is not our goal, but points well taken, but I don't want the public to get confused. We're talking about superintendent's interim goal on math proficiency. Thank you.
Any other questions for the panel or from the superintendent? Being done, we would move to the reading.
Okay, great. So we're going to transition into our technical presentation on reading proficiency. The purpose of doubling up today is so that we can end our year with a robust discussion on our reading proficiency at our June fourth meeting. So to go on to the next slide, I think this is very timely. Say, I want to remind the board that this presentation will actually be on our interim goal one point three, but if we could advance the slide. All right. So at the top, we'll see the broader board goal that we're set to formally adopt in the, the coming weeks. We need to fill in the X percent and the Y percent. But the interim goal will be the area that we've identified as one way that the board can continuously monitor progress towards that larger goal. So this interim goal one point three focuses similarly to earlier today on map growth as in catch-up growth. And we define catch-up growth at the bottom of the slide. And this particularly is for reading proficiency on map. Excellent. And then on this slide, board members can see an overview of our progress to date on our goal. You can see for this interim metric, it appears that we're on target and we can see our historical progress to date as well as the annual targets that we've set through two thousand twenty-eight on our path to achieve the, the board's goal. And then because the interim goal only focuses on third grade, the only grade level that you'll see on the slide is our third grade students. And then on the far right, you'll see the students below the fall benchmark, the high, that have high levels of growth, which is positive progress for our students. And as you can see, based on the color legend, we are on target and making progress. And then on this next slide, board members will have the opportunity to review our data broken down by subpopulation of our third graders and growth by, by race and ethnic groups. And then on this next slide, we break down that data by our subpopulations, which include gender as well as other subpopulations such as English learners and our special education students. And again, if you look on the far right column, you'll be able to see the percent of students making that high level of growth per interim goal. And then the next few slides, as always, will cover our next steps and our path to implementation. Next slide. And on this slide, we break down our instructional focus and our approach, which is that continuous cycle of looking at our collaborative data discussions, how that impacts staff and their professional learning. And then on this slide, you'll see our progress to date, some of the specific tactics that we've taken on as the administration with regards to curriculum, instruction, professional learning, our data discussions and our multi-tiered systems of support, which we can talk more in depth at our, our goal monitoring conversation at our next board meeting. And that concludes our technical report. We'll follow back up in two weeks.
Questions for the superintendent? Being done, we accept the report. This brings us to our first public comment. We do not have any students signed up for public comment. For to set aside a one hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Public comments in excess of one hour will be heard at the second opportunity at the end of our meeting. Or comments can be submitted in writing. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion. This is a public's time to speak to us and the board's time to listen. School board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. We do ask that no one attack a member's or speaker's motives, no profanity or foul language. Please refrain from disturbing the meeting. We ask that there be no cheering, applause, outbursts, waving of signs or posters. If you do have handouts that you wish to share with the board, please give them to America Sullivan, who is seated to my left. As the president of the board, it's my duty to enforce the rules of civility and decorum. As such, and consistent with Robert's rules of order, they have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules or if they fail to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Additional details and information can be found on the handout located at the door regarding audience participation in the room. Our community speakers to be heard tonight. First person is Sarah Murray, is here in person. They'll be followed by Rebecca Sherwood. Welcome to the Anchorage School District and you have three minutes. You do need to be close to a microphone so that we can hear you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Murray. I'm the mother of a sixth grader in ASD. Outside of ASD, my daughter is a member of a prominent local youth swim club, Northern Light Swim Team. As a parent, taxpayer and citizen, I come to you today. As a parent of an ASD student, I trouble, I struggle to find any data-driven reasons for the upheaval you are bringing forth to our districts with the school time change. I can find no research that suggests positive academic outcomes by moving the school start times in the manner that you guys are implying. Juno did this ten years ago in the school. Grades percentage has gone up one percent, not really good. In fact, we have data that within Alaska suggests that these time changes do nothing to improve the scores. As a result of your decree, tens of thousands of families, individuals and businesses will be more impacted. Whether it's a family that has to leave their middle school or alone in the morning, or a small business, which my husband and I own a swim team and are heavily impacted. We rely on high school aged kids to employ a much-needed service of community swim lessons. They're not going to be able to teach kids how to swim because of this. As I mentioned, my daughter is a member of the swim team. In other areas, we have seen this kind of school start change. We expect to lose forty to sixty percent of our high school swimmers. That's a lot of kids. The reason the new start time juggles things to this point is we're going to have to move our high school kids to practice in the morning before school. This reduction in membership is expected to lead the loss of two employees, Ben Kitchen and Grant Gamblin. I believe you know one of them. These are jobs that pay mortgages, tuitions, property taxes. These members lost to impose schedules and lose healthy activities altogether. A lot of these kids that swim after school, they do it because it's after school and it's convenient and they go swim. They go off to colleges and they swim. I ask you to govern with your brains and not your hearts. Do what is right and not what feels good. Teenagers will think you're cool because you're letting them sleep in. The current school times are a mess. You guys need to go back to go to bed early, get up early, makes you healthy, wealthy and wise. We talk about having the pediatrics say that kids do better sleeping. Let's talk about how much screen time we're giving them, that you guys are putting them in front of computers too. You can't pick and choose. Either choose to follow them or choose not to.
Thank you. Rebecca Sherwood? Will you state your name for the record and you have three minutes. There's a timer in front of me.
Rebecca Sherwood. Good evening. My name is Rebecca Sherwood and I am the mother of three Anchorage School District students entering grades seven, four and two this upcoming school year. I have family members and friends with children at other Anchorage School District schools in various grades. And I am close with some of your very own, the teachers who dedicate themselves to our children in the Anchorage School District. I am involved in my children's school and extracurriculars. Therefore, I have established rapport with students, parents, teachers, coaches, other extracurricular instructors and various community members. Through this vast range of people, I have the advantage and I have had the privilege to discuss the matter of school start times from many different standpoints. The concerns for school start time changes that I have discussed with this vast array of members of the community come from people with all sorts of different situations. I say this because I am not just here to oppose the school start times based on my own personal druthers or those of my tight-knit circle and how it directly affects my family of five in so many ways. This affects the entire city. So where are our polls? Where are our votes regarding this matter? While I could stand here and list the many reasons I do not agree with the school start time changes and the strong concerns I have and those of the community members I have spoken with, I will not. Why? Because I know you've heard them and you're going to hear more of them again tonight and you're going to continue hearing them. We know you're hearing them. You're just not listening. I have read some of the emails and written statements people have sent you over and over, some of them on a weekly basis. And I have read some of the in-person verbal statements people have come here and presented at these meetings. We are all sharing these as a community. You know the reasons why the majority of Anchorage is opposed to this, these changes. Anchorage is unique. What works in other places does not necessarily work here. Take a look at your Facebook posts regarding the matter. Some four to five hundred comments per post with the vast majority of people disapproving. You encourage written testimonies in our new tech-based world, but those statements are being disregarded. I'm sure you have received thousands of emails and thousands of written statements and testimonies regarding school start time changes. I am extremely disappointed in the lack of the weight these written statements and testimonies have had on the decisions and votes of the Anchorage School District Board on this subject matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening.
Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Dave Cettington, three daughters through Anchorage School District, and now I have five grandkids in Anchorage School District. I'm going to attack this on a slightly different avenue. I'm certain that you have heard plenty of written and verbal comments regarding the effects of the proposed school start paying changes and the negative effects on sporting school activities. These negative effects diminish many of the gains proposed to schedule change and hope to achieve. It's a well-known fact that sports are a major positive contributor to mental and physical health. Students learn their healthy sporting life habits in school and school-supported clubs. The purpose of my comments is to highlight an effect on non-students, which you may not have heard of. In particular, the same working adults who pay for and rely on ASD sporting assets. These people are the moms and the dads and the taxpaying adults. We want our kids to become people who learned healthy sporting life habits in school. There are many adult groups that use the ASD sporting assets for their health. I am only intimately familiar with the Service High School swimming pool. Just so you know, there's sixty adult athletes, moms, dads and working adults who swim at Service High School, plus another thirty that drop in every month. Currently, the schedule is choreographed very carefully to ensure that student athletics come first. But then it does allow time for working adults to go at least to two practices during the week and one on the weekend. Under the new change, these same adults are only going to get to workout once during the week, shortened by thirty minutes and on a Saturday. The mid-morning practice that usually utilized by these moms and dads after the kids go to school is going to be moved earlier, making this practice time completely impractical, especially for the parents with kids that attend middle school. And then the after-work time has been moved later so that those parents that need to be getting kids ready for the next school day will no longer going to be able to attend. We've already heard the fact that this is going to affect, affect some of our coaches. Two of those folks are going to be lost. It's important the school board realizes that sweeping changes like this not only have primary effects, but they also have secondary and tertiary effects. It's okay in life. Sometimes we've come out with our best intentions. We think we've had a master game plan. It seems like a really good idea. But I've gone through those things myself before and realized afterwards, maybe this wasn't the best of ideas. I think you may be in this situation. True leadership, good leadership is not afraid to go back and say, we need to reconsider. Professionally, I'm encouraging all of you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Rob Donahue Boyer? You will state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
President Hallman, members of the board. My name is Rob Donahue Boyer. I've been an active Alaskan educator for five decades. In recent years, I've worked with NEA Alaska and done research analysis for AA on ASD. I'm here tonight not to cast stones to anyone in the board or certainly to any of our former colleagues in the administration, but to perhaps help inform the board of issues going on in the district that you may not be fully aware of. Twenty years of working in certificated staffing has taught me that hiring is like a bucket with holes in the bottom. If the holes are small, few current teachers fleeing and the bucket full with new applicants, schools can staff this district with the best and the brightest. I'm here to say the bucket is in trouble. Your teachers are fleeing in larger numbers than ever before. They're leaving because teachers are realizing their tier-three retirement system is not a realistic pension at all. Four years of good exiting survey by AA have shown us that there's an ever-creasing ASD workload along with concerns for teachers' mental and physical health are the second and third most significant reasons for teachers leaving. The survey and research data I analyzed and analyzed revealed poor work environments in many schools caused by those increased workloads, impactful class size increases that are not identified by just looking at PTR, budgetary PTR numbers. Student violence and out-of-school suspensions have gone up dramatically in many ASD sites. A decrease in and inconsistent student attendance regardless of the data tool that you use. And the pail of new applicants is continuing to shrink. New applicants are increasingly difficult to recruit due largely to the state, national shortage of candidates, lack of significant teacher-producing UAA preparation program and because potential new hires do their homework and discover the work environment issues that leaving teachers already knew about. If you're not totally convinced, I'd like to share the following data with you in my last minute. I've tracked the posted openings in the ASD over the last thirteen years, both at the start of the school year as well as various times during the school year. In two thousand fifteen, I was the ASD HR Executive Director of Staffing and Operations. And in January of that year, we had forty posted openings and we thought we had a crisis. Thirty-one of those were in SPED and related services. In January of two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, the ASD had a hundred and fifty-two and a hundred and forty posted open positions. As of a week ago, we currently have a hundred eighty-nine. I know that some of the underlying causes of the recruitment or retention crisis are attempting to be addressed by administration that several of the root causes can't be easily fixed. But I also know that the board and district don't establish and retention and chief hiring of the district. I'm afraid we will all continue with the combined ability of the district to effectively.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Corey Ace? You will state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you, President Holloman and school board members. My name's Corey Ace, Anchorage Education Association President. I miss you, Margot. Already, three hundred and fifty educators resigned in the two thousand twenty-one school year. Four hundred educators resigned in the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two school year. Four hundred educators resigned in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And as of April thirtieth, three hundred and forty-three educators had resigned, putting us on track to lose another four hundred educators this year, twenty-three, twenty-four. That's a total of one thousand five hundred and fifty educators who have resigned in just four years. In other words, over half your certificated staff have turned over in four years. This is unsustainable. We are in a staffing crisis. As AEA president, I have sat in this audience for four years and watched you discuss student outcomes, graduation rates, attendance, and other data points. I have read your school board goals and guardrails many, many times, and they lack one vital objective for their success. You have nothing on regards staffing. No staffing objective. Even before the last three years of significant inflation, the two thousand seventeen Iser report revealed that hiring of new educators in Alaska costs a staggering twenty thousand dollars per educator. With four hundred resignations from last year, that's a whopping eight million dollars. At that time, ASD shared a cost our district closer to twenty-five thousand dollars. By two thousand twenty-one, it was shared that the cost was closer to twenty-seven thousand dollars or ten point eight million dollars. That's astonishing, as there are so many better ways for these millions of dollars to be spent to support student outcomes. In the last four years, we have had, we have lost one thousand five hundred and fifty educators' resignations at a cost of forty-one point eight million dollars. Remember, these are conservative estimates. What could you do with the forty-one million dollars to support student outcomes? You have lots of ideas. Your goals and guardrails do not address staffing, the number one crisis that has plagued ASD for over four years. You have no goal or guardrail to retain your staff. Why should you retain your staff? I don't have the time to go over the list, but I did send you multiple reasons retention supports student outcomes. So I'll let you read that email. "These outcomes are tangible, effective, and critical to ASD's long-term success in increasing student outcomes. Your leadership is imperative in prioritizing educator retention as ASD's foremost concern, requiring swift and unified action." Mr. Higgins asked, what are we doing differently? Well, help us. Start by setting a goal, an objective, something the district can start managing. Thank you for your time. I look forward to working on this effort with you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Jared Bowling? You will state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Jared Bowling. My name is Jared Bowling and I'm a parent of two children at ASD, a freshman and a seventh grader. I'm here to speak on the academies of Anchorage proposal. After watching the May seventh ASD workshop presentation, I became deeply invested in comparing ASD with the three school districts whose success we aim to replicate. While the concept of academies is promising, my concern lies whether the Anchorage School District can successfully implement this program, given the constraints considering these successful districts. My main concerns are classroom time, stakeholder involvement, school year length, and financial resources. The proposal of going from six to eight classes on a block schedule effectively reduces classroom time for each of those courses by twenty-four percent. Given that ninth grade math scores, critical for graduation rates and district success, would be significantly affected, this is alarming. I've consulted with educators who have significant concerns and feel they have not been heard or involved in the planning. Additionally, our district has one of the shortest school years in the nation for its size. The other districts we aspire to emulate have longer school days and more school days per year, resulting in those students spending up to a hundred and thirty more hours in school per year. This would be the equivalent of ASD adding four weeks to our school year. Moreover, these districts have significantly higher budgets. For instance, the high school of a similar size in Tennessee has the budget four times larger than ours. This allows them to have twice as many educators per student. This financial advantage is critical for them to meet their successful criteria. However, our number one successful criteria is to increase graduation rates from eighty-two percent, which is the same graduation rate that Nashville has achieved over the last ten years. If we aim to achieve the success of these other districts, we must ensure ASD has a detailed plan that instills confidence in our ability to succeed with these limited resources. Will an additional three and a half million dollars a year help with this gap? A significant reason you may not be hearing from other parents is that ASD has not is because information like this has not been presented to those parents. There's been a high collaboration between ASD and the businesses, local businesses and community to create important and useful pathways for the academy. My concern is of classroom time, school year length, and financial resources needed to be addressed in this detailed plan before we continue on this path. Please ensure that the collaboration with the educators and administrators responsible for implementing these changes is considered before we just assume that this can be a success. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Christine Cannington?
Yes, Christine Cannington, and I, we've put three daughters through ASD. One is actually an educator and have five grandchildren going through ASD right now. Like the others before me, I am here to voice my concerns regarding the decision to change school start times. I agree with the testimonies of the others regarding this matter, but would like to go a different direction into the decision the school board has made. I have had numerous conversations with an eclectic crowd regarding this matter. Students, parents, teachers, other ASD employees, childcare providers, and adult athletes who use ASD facilities. No one I have talked to agrees with this change. When we are discussing the matter, I tell these individuals to go get involved, voice their concerns with the school board. The response I receive is the same. Why should I waste my time? The school board is going to do what they want with or without my input. This is the reputation you have with many. One of alienating and doing what you want without taking in consideration the students, parents, teachers, and other ASD employees. They desire, I'm sorry, parents and ASD employees desire how this will negatively impact their lives. Do not forget, you were elected to serve. You are not elected to rule over the tens of thousands of people this will affect and make decisions without the input of these people. I urge you to do the right thing and reconsider this issue. In doing so, you will gain the confidence of the different groups of people I have mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Juliee Rognes? If you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name's Juliee Rognes and I have two students at the Anchorage School District, a seventh grader and going to be junior in high school. And I'm here to discuss the proposed academies, as I'm sure you've received emails from me, and how they will impact the college-bound high school students. The school district is recommending adding periods and changing to an AB schedule. And the proposed schedule would mean that high school students would only attend each class every other day. And that would mean that you would only see your teachers for the core curriculum subjects of math, science, and social studies or English every other day. Teachers are not able to teach two lessons in one day, and likewise, students are not able to learn two lessons in one day. Therefore, the current curriculum would be cut in half. The high school core curriculum is based on building on a foundation of information. And by cutting the core curriculum in half, my student would only get like half of Algebra I, then half of Trigonometry curriculum, and then half of a calculus curriculum, and so on, and then be expected to be prepared for testing in college. It is unreasonable to cut the core curriculum education in half to add unnecessary and unwanted electives. The current plan appears to be that the school district intends to implement the new program across the entire school district, and there would not be an optional program to educate college-bound students with an adequate core curriculum education. By prioritizing the academies, you're also taking teaching resources and finances away from focusing on a core high school curriculum. And you're robbing the opportunity for my seventh grader to be educated and prepared for college. I implore you to provide an option for college-bound students or any student that needs a full core curriculum in high school by not using any form of an AB schedule. I've experienced it in high school and I know how detrimental it can be to the curriculum that you need and allow all the students the option to have a full education. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That completes the list of people that were signed up to speak. We will move to item or area F on the agenda, the consent agenda. Are there any items that members wish to pull for discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Member Bellamy?
I'd like to pull item three, memorandum number one four six.
Item three is pulled. Any other items?
Consent.
Seeing none other, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as modified?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any objection? Member Higgins? Member Higgins would like to pull item four? Any other items? Seeing none, is there any objection to adoption of the remaining items under the consent agenda? If not, they are approved. That takes us to action items. Item number one under action item is ASD memorandum number one sixty-five. I have a motion to adopt.
Mr. President, I move to approve and adopt the tentative agreement between the district and Totem Association workers, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in this unit from July one, two thousand twenty-four to June thirty, two thousand twenty-seven, which is ASD memorandum number one six five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We do have someone signed up to speak to that, Sandy Thompson. Welcome to the podium. You will state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Good evening, members of the Anchorage School Board. Dr. Bryant, an ASD team for the record. My name is Sandy Thompson Wallace and I am president of Totem Association, the largest support staff union in the district. Tonight, before you, under the action items, is the Totem Successor Contract for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-seven, which was ratified by our membership on May third. This tentative agreement was overwhelmingly approved by our members. I want to thank you, not only to the district negotiations team, but especially the Totem negotiations members. Both sides worked collaboratively to come to this agreement. While we didn't always agree and we approached issues and concerns from different sides, we were able to have meaningful conversation to work through our issues. Totem appreciates, sorry, Totem appreciates the district's willingness to recognize the work that our staff does on behalf of the students, staff, and families with a significant wage increase, an increase to the district's health benefit contribution, and added language for remote learning days, which were all areas of the biggest concern for our members coming into these negotiations. One of the best things about this tentative agreement is that it did not take sixteen months over Zoom to come to an agreement. That was a blessing for everyone involved. I request that this school board approve this successor contract for your Totem Association staff for twenty-four, twenty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do members have comment? Member Wilson?
Just want to say thank you to all of our Totem members for all of their work. They do incredible work. It's been, we won't talk about how many years since I've been a Totem member myself. But I know that the contributions that you make to our district, the contributions that you make to to support our students and our families. So thank you for all your work and I'm very excited about this contract for you as well.
Member Jacobs?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a quick question first, and I promised I would ask the Totem member encountered earlier tonight during our celebration. Could administration answer how a Totem member who is maxed out at their current step in lane would be handled by this contract?
Mr. Lang? Yeah, through the chair to Member Jacobs, I believe the P, the final step includes a one percent increase over their salary year over year for each year of the contract if they're in that, that in-lucent step at the end of the, the step and salary schedule.
So a follow-up, Mr. Chair, thank you. Appreciate that clarification and then I'll echo the comments made to demonstrate appreciation for our paraprofessionals. I like the last count that our board heard that ASD has well over a hundred paraprofessional staffing classrooms. The paraprofessionals are in many cases are educators and in many even more cases there are future educators. And so I'm glad that we can adopt a tentative agreement which honors the service of these individuals. And I hope that we can continue to collaborate with lawmakers at the local and state level to ensure that we can continue to do so on the future contracts. And that will include some education to ensure that specifically the legislature understands how valuable these employees are and they shouldn't be grouped together with a nebulous term of district administration or support staff that can potentially go by the wayside. Thank you.
Member Bellamy?
I just want to echo everything that's already really been said. I wish it could have could have given more, but I think where we are is where we are today and looking forward to appreciating this particular bargaining group as we continue to navigate through these very tough financial times. Thank you.
Any other comment? I will just close by agreeing with everything that's been said. And if teachers make their classrooms work occasionally with direct help from Totem employees, it's the Totem employees that make our schools work every day. And perhaps it's just a coincidence that on a night when we had, we couldn't decide who was more perfect among our Totem employees, that we are ratifying this contract. Without any further comments, we'll put it to a vote. We'll call the roll.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Bellamy? Student Representative Tag?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes.
unanimously, we have ratified the contract. Thank you. Next item is item one four six. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, I move to adopt ASD memorandum number one four six, Revision of Board Policy six one one five Ceremonies and Observances to approve revisions to BP six one one five Ceremonies and Observances.
Do we have a second?
I'll second for
Moved and seconded. Open for discussion.
Yes, I pulled it, if I can speak to why I pulled it.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have several reasons. So um I have several reasons why I pulled it. Uh, my primary reason is because I don't know that we have any other policy that is so prescriptive as this one. Uh, and that they seem like ARs to me and not policy. Um, so my thought is that this this particular uh this particular memorandum or this particular revision needs more work. Uh, so my so that's why I pulled it. I I I would like for it to go back to committee for additional my I move that it goes back to to committee for additional discussion and work. Um, so that would be my 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 motion. Uh, yeah, my motion is I want to do it correctly because I don't want to get up, get it whacked up here. But um, so so if I was to offer, uh, I think we're just discussing it now, but my my ultimate would be for it, my ultimate motion would be for this to go back to committee.
But you are making a motion.
I am making a motion. For it to go back to committee.
Is there a second? Seconded by member Higgins. Um,
It is.
The discussion on whether or not to refer to committee. Member Donley?
Thank you, Mister President. Mister President, um, our existing uh BP six one one five states that the school board encourages activities that instill pride in our country. The pledge of allegiance shall be recited or patriotic exercise conducted on a regular basis as determined by the school board. So that leaves it up to the school board to adopt through the board's um policies, which is what this proposes to change, patriotic exercises to be conducted on a regular basis. Um, this would uh as before the board now, and but we anticipate a substitute amendment, by the way. Um, that in all schools, the national anthem shall be played on the first school day of every month. And the state flag show, state flag song would be followed, would be played following the national anthem. Then individual schools may choose to begin additional school days with the national anthem with the state flag song. Um, we had multiple meetings about this in the governance committee over the period of gosh, I guess it was almost close to a year. Um, and we had a analysis done by the administration. Um, and a report back from the administration, which the governance committee considered. And came up with the language as it appears in um the current resolution one four six before us. It also recognizes uh several holidays that have never been recognized before uh formally, including um Veterans Day, September eleventh and December seventh, saying that there would be a playing of the national anthem on those days. Additionally, it recognizes um um that there would be something that every school would do for the declaration uh regarding the declaration of independence uh prior to uh which occurs over the summer. So it doesn't have an opportunity to be during the school year right now, but it would be something before the end of the year. Additionally, it would be for the first time the board would have a policy regarding Constitution Day, which is a federal mandate that this school district uh to receive federal funds that all class classes have some sort of recognition of Constitution Day. Um, and it would just simply say that the preamble would be read um at schools kind of during the day. Um, so it's been around for over a year. Uh, it's gone through multiple meetings in the governance committee. It's been the subject of the analysis and report of the the administration. Um, it's clearly in line with the existing policy, which calls for uh the the for the board to determine these types of act patriotic activities. Um, so I believe it's appropriate to move forward with a a discussion and a vote on it at this time rather than moving it back to committee. So I oppose moving it back to
Other lessons?
Um, as member Donley knows, I uh wrestled with this um uh proposal um quite a bit over the past couple of days. Um, and I realized that I want um I want our students to have teachable moments above all. I want them to have learning opportunities. And what I recognize that what I was initially ten leaning to do um was add a curricular focus to a policy that maybe should not have a curricular focus. And then I thought, well, maybe we could work with a different amendment um so that our students wouldn't be left with a text without a context. Um, so I did not come to this board meeting thinking that there would be um a move to send it back to committee. But at this point, I think it would behoove us to send it back to committee to ultimately end up with a better product for our students. So um I have hopes for this uh policy moving forward. I do think that maybe we can work out some of the details that are in committee than an amendment by amendment process here. So that's I will support the move to send it back to committee today.
Member Higgins?
I I second it because I wanted to get into this discussion. I'm not sure what we're going to get out of the committee. But I do want to be sure that by sending it back to the committee, we put a timeline on here to get a response back to the board. Uh, as we it shouldn't be delayed indefinitely kind of situation. And I think uh member Donley pointed out how long it's been ongoing. We either make a decision if we don't, he's made a reasonable request. But I do support going back to committee, let's address whatever's out there, uh member lessons. I appreciate that. Uh, and then go forward from there. But I do want to hope that we move quickly to the policy of the governance uh committee and and make a decision to move it forward. Thank you.
Any other comment? Member Jacob?
Yep, thank you, Mister President. Um, I'm I'm all for um working things out outside of a board meeting where we can only offer amendments and amendments to amendments and the a uh either a work session or committee meeting allows us additional flexibility to collaborate. So um it sounds like there's a desire to uh perfect the product and I agree there's plenty of room to improve and provide more meaningful opportunities for students to engage in civic education. So um I'm willing to support it and continue the work. That's the will of the board.
Other member Bellamy?
Yeah, uh I just want for the record, this is my wanting it to go back to my motion has nothing to do with me being uh anti uh pride in our country. It has to do with what we are asking uh uh administrators to do in terms of how we do that, how we instill pride. Uh, I don't know what I'm doing on the first Monday of every month in my own life. I I don't know the how we can how we can have principals. Uh, I mean, I guess a principal can delegate it to somebody. I I don't know how we can um how we can make this work and and then hold people accountable to this the way in its current form. So uh I that's that's the basis for my motion.
Any other comments? I I will say oh, um, I will say as the chair, when this came through the governance committee, uh, it it does prescribe things that have to be done in a certain timeframe. Uh, at the same time, uh, all the proposals for modified to give schools a certain amount of latitude. Uh, if they were going to say have an assembly, going to have uh a different kind of lesson, um. But it's sort of backstop that they're not doing any of that, then there are certain things that that would be required. This has been in committee for a long time and there was quite a bit of discussion of it. I'm going to uh I support going ahead and voting on it tonight uh and adopting it at the same time uh that doesn't mean that could not be amended, not be amended later. Uh, but I think it does establish some expectations or things we want to have happen in our building. If there are no other comments, we will put it to vote. Um, member Donley?
Thank you, Mister President. Just response to the comment that how would we enforce it? The same way we enforce all our current policies. And we already have a policy that says the pledge of allegiance shall be recited um on a regular basis. Yeah, so it's no different than than any of the other policies where we put requirements upon our individual schools to do particular things. It's just the policy which is what our job is. I think I was neglectful. The one thing that I uh was working my way down to when I spoke about what's actually in here was it would also for the first time have a recognition of June heat um and would call for um a partial reading of the emancipation proclamation sometime uh around the end of the year because it occurs during the summer. So there's no opportunity to emphasize it during the existing school year.
Member Higgins, would you wish to speak? Anyone else wish to comment? At this time, we are voting on whether or not to refer the motion back to committee. Yeah, you will call the roll.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Student Representative Pack?
Yes.
President Holman?
No.
By a five to two vote, it has been referred to the governance committee uh in accordance with what member Higgins said. I hope that will happen promptly and it can be back before it's modified for. Next on our agenda is item one thirty three. The master plan for Bartlett High School, I have a motion to adopt.
Mister President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number one three three approval of master plan and space planning for Bartlett High School to approve the master plan and space planning for Bartlett High School renewal project and authorize the superintendent to use them as a guide for future capital improvements affecting the school and its campus.
I have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, open for discussion. Anyone wish to speak?
Thank you. I I I pulled this because I had questions about it, not that I don't support the obviously massive amount of work to do at Bartlett, over eighty billion dollars and that's before inflation is going to take hold uh within it. And I see in the capital improvement plan to do it all within three years. We've got uh you know, the nine hundred billion plus in the period maintenance. I'm looking at trying to I I don't know what the scope of what it says it's authorized the superintendent to use them as a guide for future capital improvements and affecting the school and its campus. I don't have a problem with the plan. What I have a question about is just the prioritization that we're going to be doing is force of funding. We've got roofs that uh are deteriorating the inside of schools. That's got to be a priority. We have uh boiler systems that are really old. Uh, we've got uh opportunities for energy efficiency that will repay itself within a year in some cases uh that we need to do. We know we got facilities uh uh needs that fall into one of three categories. One is safety. Two is to make sure the schools survive and keep going. And three is to improve the academic aspect. And then we have other areas. I know that there's issues about vehicles and the maintenance of the and the and those being able to do snow removal and do all that. And um energy efficiency issues as a separate as a fourth category. So I just I I when I read this and I know that they put it in the plan, capital improvement, let's put eighty million dollars upfront before, you know, a lot of these other projects. I'm not sure what our approval represents. I approved the plan, I thought the design, I enjoyed that. Uh, I think they're trying to get some good things done out of that school and I didn't have any problems with the with the presentation. But the prioritization of this, of every part of it over the entire school district is the issue. And if the language here is to say that this is a one, you know, has to be a one size, everything included. That's what my concern was and what this approval process represents. That's what I'm curious about.
Mr. Anderson, would you mind speaking to this?
That's a great question. I'm glad you asked. So um on any of the high schools, when you see a master plan, it's usually over multiple years. This one's over seven years, which is either two or three bonds. Um, I'm sure you recall back you won't say how many years when Chugiak's master plan was approved. Um, because the CIP changed over time, it actually never finished all of the all of the stages. Now, this is a three stage project over roughly seven years if funding is available. But you're correct that as we come into CIP discussions in the fall and I think all of those, I I can't remember six or seven briefings we gave this past fall that as we start looking at all of the different iterations, um you know, unfortunately, what we can't plan for is when will the state or will the state ever restart bond debt reimbursement? Because if you were to go back to a sixty seventy percent reimbursement, then really a lot of our discussions on how small can a bond be or how small should it be would would be much different. Um, so this really is just a master plan um acknowledgement that will put it on the CIP um as a seven year, three phase project, um obviously starting with the design. Um, when the 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 two people that were doing the design architecture spoke, they did tell you it wasn't a design. They looked at specs, they looked at um problems within the building and so they prioritized and that's how they came up with three phases. Um, one thing that we couldn't show that night because um I don't know, I'm I'm not a technological miracle apparently with videos um off my laptop is that right after the earthquake, um Sean Prince sent all of us a video. He was up on the fifth floor, third floor, fifth floor in a classroom. And he was waving a manila envelope through the wall to the outside and you could see the sun coming in from the outside and it wasn't structural. So nobody was at at risk of of being harmed, but obviously we had to repair that very quickly as well as we could. So when you look in terms of energy efficiency, Bartlett is one of the worst in terms of energy efficiency. In fact, I think I was there four times this winter or four busted pipes all along the front of the building. Um, because they had cold air coming through the um the spaces where the pipes are. So this this building was, it was built in seventy one. It needs a lot of love. Will the will the community support the amount of love it needs in a seven year period? I'm I'm not sure, but I think as part of a CIP, as part of a master plan as a start point. Um, I think I think the year that Larry has spent um crawling through every room in this building, um I think it's a solid plan and I felt pretty comfortable.
Any other comment, tell this member Lawson?
Um, so uh speaking for some of the fifteen hundred and some odd women and girls who ran through the Bartlett parking lot barefoot this past weekend as part of the Golden Nugget triathlon. So thank you Bartlett for hosting. There are some sections of the parking lot which are not kind to bare feet running at top speed. Um, so that's my not boots on the ground experience, but um my question is really um the scope of the work. Um, we talked about whether some of those things could be grant funded. But is the overall scope of the work because it, I think under it links some academy work? Is everything in that package, you're shaking your head, so I got that wrong. Uh, I guess is everything in the question uh in the package bondable, right? It's are all of the improvements in that master plan bondable or would some elements not be bondable?
Well, certainly all elements are bondable. But if we can find grants, if we can find other sources of funds, um like this year, um looks like we're going to get just under nine point four million. Unless the governor veto is part of the capital budget um for projects that we've already completed in the past. And we get those. And we get those sometimes every year in a row and and then uh with the current administration, there's been a few years where we didn't. Um, but there's a- also grants beyond that that we continually go after. I mean, if you, if you put it in perspective, if you want to build a new elementary school that houses two to three hundred students, that's about fifty million dollars. If you want to renew um Bartlett for eighty-two million, they support fifteen hundred students. That's about seven times as much as most of our elementary schools. So it is a high price over two or three bonds. But it's a, it's really not a high price when you look at giving this building another fifty years. Um, where you don't have to tear it down and rebuild and I'll defer to Larry. I honestly don't know how much it would cost to rebuild a high school, but um, I'm sure it's in the hundreds of millions.
All right. Uh, in fact, there was in the plan what it would be to replace it and I believe it was north of two hundred and fifty million dollars. So, yeah, it's, this will make it pretty much a brand new school, ready to go. Obviously, as you get into ten years, there'll be things that wear out in ten years, that'll have to happen. That doesn't make it bulletproof forever, but it does bring it up to a new standard.
And and to clarify the academies, so what I learned um from the folks in Nashville was they didn't do it initially, but about seven, eight, ten years in, they realized that they had done a lot of renovations at high schools. And what they hadn't done was look at while we're going to go ahead and lift the roof off, while we're going to go ahead and do all these other things. Are there some areas where we can make tweaks and improvements to make it a better educational experience for the academies? And so we, we should, we will. Every time we're going to do a major renovation, it would make sense not to say, well, this is the way it's been for fifty years. Uh, really this past year that Larry spent was ed specs and looking at every part of that design that wasn't optimal for a high school today. And so we would naturally include um any modifications for academy classrooms a- as we looked at the final design.
Thank you. I guess just as to put a fine point on it, then that everything that's proposed in this plan, yes, would be bond, would be bondable, should we need to go that route? And not have other grants rely on, which would also be another good thing to pursue. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, member Higgins?
Yeah, I I I have no problem as I mentioned before, supporting this de- design, that's not an issue. What I look forward to is having the six-year plan coming forth in front of the board. So we can have a discussion, not waiting for the week before the the things go through or something else. But time enough to be able to have a discussion about how we're prioritizing what the board would like to see done. We've got to put a priority on maintaining these schools it for the future. And I'm not opposed to doing a lot of money into Bartlett. And I'm not saying that all of this money is not well invested, but there are competing interests here in regards to how every school is doing. And that's what my concern is, whether it's the safety concerns, the entrance, the the roofs, the fire, you name it, that's where my interest is at. So I'm looking forward to having a good discussion on that where we have plenty of time before the bond has to be presented. Thank you.
Any other questions or comment? If not, the oh, member Donlin.
Could you tell us again what the current occupancy rate at Bartlett is?
Um, for our standards, it's at s- seventy-three percent. And if you use the state standards, it's at sixty-five percent.
And the closest high school to Bartlett, would that be East? Would be East? What's the occupancy at East right now?
Approximately the same.
So we've got two schools next to each other that are in the sixties even by, oh, seventies, let's say. As we dis- as the ASD determines occupancy, which is different than what the state determines occupancy. Um, but but at this point, we're starting us down a road of spending eighty-one million dollars on one of those schools. Uh, we go back and look what happened with Inlet View, kind of started the same way. Yeah, we put three million onto bond proposition that had essential earthquake repairs onto it to do design work. And so the voters, it was a very undemocratic process because the voters didn't get to choose not to begin the road down to spending fifty-one million dollars on Inlet View without rejecting earthquake repairs. Then it came again and uh um, arguments were consistently made throughout that process. I heard him over and over and over again. Well, we've spent so much money on it now, we've got to finish it. You know, we've already invested this much money. I'm very concerned that by the time we start asking the voters for this money, people are going to make those same arguments. We've already invested so much money in this project. We need to do it. Um, whether or not we need, the community needs to sixty percent occupant at high schools right next, you know, next door to each other or not. Um, so it starts to become very concerning. Um, it'd be different if we had, you know, uh, if the board had approved my motion to educate the voters better and to have the full cost of Inlet View on the ballot, which was over fifty million dollars, but that didn't show on the ballot. That is very non-democratic process to only show the, you know, a small, less than fifty percent of the cost of that project on the ballot. And that, I think pure, you know, democracy only works best if if people have full education of what they're voting on. I don't think most people realized it was going to be over fifteen million dollars probably expended there because it wasn't on the ballot because the board at the time decided not to advise people that on the ballot. I'm worried what'll, how this will actually be presented to voters if they will not be given a full uh information about the picture. Um, we're looking at proposals to shut down ten schools. I mean, potentially, we were told that last year. Um, I very concerned that there's an awful lot of much higher priorities and deferred maintenance out there among schools, um, than to begin the process to spend eighty-one million dollars. Um, but we don't know where we're going to be after this next round of school closures. They're, you know, anticipated at this time. Um, I'm starting to become very concerned that this is going to be another one of those things where becomes uh the super tanker hit it in one direction. You won't be able to turn it around once you start this process. I I think the school needs to be fixed up, but I'm just wondering if this is the right time to do that because bringing us on this course at this time, when we're looking at something that could be as much as a hundred million dollar operating uh budget gap next for the next school year and um huge ten hundreds of millions of dollars in deferred maintenance. This may not be the right time to go down this road right now for this larger project. I'm becoming more and more concerned about it.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around some of the previous comments. Um, I just want to make sure we're not conflating um, a remodel project with a a proposal to build a new school. Um, also, I'm fairly certain I'm on solid ground by saying that the deferred maintenance backlog. Well, I'm going to ask, uh, how much of the deferred maintenance backlog exists at Bartlett High School?
I don't have the total amount, but out of that eighty million, probably seventy to seventy-five million is removing the deferred maintenance.
Right, okay. That's, that's my assumption is this, this proposal is to address our deferred maintenance backlog and so um the alternatives are, um, ASD could propose building a brand-new high school. And I was looking at the last time someone in our area built a high school and I want to say was out in Matt Sue and it was roughly fifty to sixty million dollars. Um, but the, you know, um, maybe I was pop a bit and I was trying to figure out why and then I looked at the capacity and it was a fraction of what Bartlett contains. Um, the alternative is what member Donley suggested. So I guess the other question I have for administration. As member Donley alluded to, have we examined closing Bartlett High School and what was the result of that finding?
If you look at uh Bartlett High School, they have a capacity. Um, uh, well, the de-capacity is eighteen hundred and uh, East is twenty-two hundred. You couldn't put the fourteen hundred and twenty-seven kids in Bartlett into East. It would, you would be splitting them all over. Um, significantly increasing transportation, which as everyone knows is also something that that we will be looking very closely at when we look at the rightsizing plan. Um, they've already had twenty-one NORs already. The tourist season started on fifteen May this year, the earliest it's ever started. And in fact, premier couldn't even support a high school graduation on seventeen May. They've extended the tourist season um, into uh September fifteenth and beyond for this fall, this coming fall. So when you're looking at busing, you know, uh, uh, groups of a thousand plus. Um, you know, will we look at that this summer? Naturally. Um, I I don't know that we would look at closing this school because we're worried. Um, I I I think we, we won't, one, we don't have the metrics yet, right? So it would be we really haven't picked the schools. People keep throwing a number out. And I know, I know a number was briefed um, a year and a half ago of potentially, I've been looking at data. But we have not picked a single school at this point, nor have we picked a number for what people should expect this fall. Um, I I think it's not going to be one. Um, because we have a significant number of underutilized schools, but I don't know what that number and part of that really is the transportation costs and the feasibility of could we even get enough buses to to move them far enough? Frankly, it wouldn't be East. You'd move them probably all the way to Chugiak. Um, but they wouldn't fit in Chugiak, so you'd have to split them into multiple high schools. So it's, it's complicated. And as we look at it this summer, we will look at every iteration until something becomes infeasible to actually pull it off. And 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 then naturally, we're not going to recommend something that we don't think can physically be pulled off. Um, I mean, that would be not something uh, any anyone in the administration would do. We have no political um, people, right? I mean, we, we work, but we don't have constituents that we have to please. So we're not going to have favoritism for that reason. We'll, we'll look at all of the schools this summer. Um, we'll look at middle schools, high schools, elementary schools. And we'll come back with a plan in in August, September that meets um what the board approves as metrics in August with our best recommendation. And like a year and a half ago, the surveys are probably going to show that the Anchorage um, community understands that we need to right-size, just not their school. And I think we'll see that over and over. As we saw in Birchwood, which has, you know, really one of the lowest utilization rates in the district, but um, there was an awful lot of people at the town hall that night.
Mr. President?
Number Jacobs? Yeah, thank you. Just a a follow-up and so appreciate that. And I I I think that was what I assumed to be the answer. Um, there isn't an easy way to um for a, a more um efficient way using our dollars to to address our deferred maintenance backlog, to ensure we have adequate um, facility space for our students to be um safe and and learn in. And then we understand as a board, we've approved on multiple times that a newer facility um, or at least a facility that's had its deferred maintenance taken care of, operates more efficiently at a reduced cost and saves um, maintenance staff and facility staff significant time. And so, um, if there's a proposal from the the board to examine, kind of do the administration's work and examine school closures, I suppose that's a road the board could take if the board wants to pursue building a a new building. Um, or I would assume, you know, modifying the proposal to um, downsize facility space, which would increase the cost of the project, I'm sure. Um, perhaps that's the road the board wants to take, but um, this appears to be the most efficient use of resources while attacking our deferred maintenance backlog and best serving our students and staff. Um, I don't know that I could design a better proposal myself. And so um, absent hearing one, I I think I'm left in a place where I have to support this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comment? Member Donlin?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I think you put your, you know, you identified it. I mean, West is at a hundred and five percent capacity right now, but Diamond, Service, South and East are all significant under capacity. Um, you'd have to spread, uh, you'd consider spreading it out among other high schools. Or maybe it's another high school. We 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 fix Service up and then it's another high school that has to, you know, spread out. But right now I do believe there's the capac- I'm just doing some figures here about what the capacity, I I think those students would would fit in those other four high schools right now at their, at as low as their capacity is. Um, you know, it's not so much that the administration taking a lead on closing schools. It's that this board has failed over the last six years to redistrict as needed. I mean, we got elementary schools, they're out of whack. We've got middle schools, they're out of whack. We've got high schools out of whack. The board should have taken that as a project and I was repeatedly told. I can't know how many times I said, we're, we're going to do it next year. We're going to do it next year. We're going to do it next year. It's too much to do this year. But we should have been looking at this over the last decade. And and there have been some minor adjustments accomplished, but there should have been a lot more done towards balancing out the capacity of all our schools. Um, and and now we're way out of whack in a lot of places. I mean, and so all that, I think, should be going on and done before we go down. I wish it, it wasn't so, but I'm afraid if if we go down the road to beginning this eighty-one million dollar project, there's no coming back. I mean, it's just proven from the history I've seen now. Um, from, from what's happened the last few years with with the bonds. Um, so um, uh, that's why I express a concern that without doing the re-districting first uh, to an attempt to balance it out and maximize utilization of our schools, going down the road to spend another eighty-one million dollars i- is is not timely. I don't think it's timely. And I'm not saying it shouldn't be done eventually. It may prove to be the best investment. But I think we should be doing re-districting before we do this.
Member Lawson's?
I think I just wanted to offer a little bit of context that on the bond that just passed. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. I think there was a sixteen million dollar-ish item for the roof at Chugiak, which is maybe one of the most underutilized schools, certainly in the secondary level. Um, so we have certainly set a precedent for saying we do want to invest in our maintain our facilities. Um, and this strikes me, making sure that we maintain Bartlett High School strikes me as analogous to maintaining the Chugiak uh facility, um, and and perhaps less, um, I don't want to use a strong word, um, perhaps uh serving more students than the Chugiak um addition. Not the Chugiak remodel, Chugiak roof repair. And just because it's a fun fact that I found, um, and I have the microphone. Um, I learned that in Akron, um, if you go to their website, uh, all but a handful of their schools have been rebuilt in the last fifteen to twenty years in a massive eight hundred million dollar taxpayer-supported effort to bring modern, tech-ready, energy-efficient new school buildings to our city and our student body of twenty-one thousand pre-K through twelfth grade. There's money in Akron.
Any other comments? Seeing none, the question for you is to adopt the master plan and space planning for Bartlett High School. Sullivan, if you'll call the roll.
Member Bellamy? Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Student Representative Pack?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. We have adopted the master plan and space plan for Bartlett High School. That brings us to our non-action items. Are there any items that members wish to pull for discussion?
Yes.
Number Lawson's. Um, member, excuse me, number, uh memorandum number one-six-two, which is item number nine, the Academies of Anchorage Master Plan.
Anyone else wish to pull any other item? Member Wilson?
I believe it's number seven, memorandum one-five-eight.
So anyone have any other items they wish to pull? The hands, uh, we'll start with memorandum one-six-two. Member Lessons?
Okay, um, so I I guess I have a couple of intentions with pulling this. Uh, our work sessions have been full of a lot of information, and uh I'll, even though last time we we got to ask questions, um, I certainly feel like I I continue to have some, um. I think there was a member from the community uh this evening who said something like the plan must instill confidence, and um I guess I'd like to get to that point. I don't I don't have confidence yet that we have the resources um to pull this off. And I'm also, um, I I mean, actually, I I kind of want to go page by page in the um, you know, in the in the big master plan, just because there are questions that have that came up when I uh read through it. Um, but I want to begin with my big question, which is really grounded in the approach. And um if if we uh go to ASD's intention, as far as I understand, um, really, the the timeline proposes five years for a full Academy's rollout. Um, you know, focusing on these first three years. If this is, if F Y twenty-four is year one and F Y twenty-eight is year five, um, you know, the plan is to provide wall-to-wall academies progressively uh beginning in year two, next year's freshman academies uh reaching grade twelve by year five of the project. And so, um, I wanted to understand how we got to that point. So I I spent a lot of time working through board docs, and then I spent some time looking into um Nashville. And what I learned about in Akron, and what I learned about Nashville is that their own journey towards the academy system began really about two decades ago when the state of Tennessee was potentially going to take over Metro Nashville schools. And at that point in time, depending on your source, their graduation rate was around fifty-eight to sixty-two percent. And so, um, you know, kind of like I've seen here, they begin to partner with an initial group of stakeholders. They begin to backwards design their system, and uh then they secured a smaller learning communities grant from the U S Department of Education as seed money. Um, I found a podcast on Spotify uh from a few years ago, and I spent some time listening to it, which is how I learned about some of the kind of the history. And I wanted to play um a short clip. Um, but there is a woman named Donna Gilli who served as the director of the Academies of Nashville, who we'll listen to, and she in this podcast is talking about how they spent twelve, eighteen months on community engagement and professional development, taking their staff to other communities to see these small learning communities in action, uh, really trying to understand and build connection, uh, excuse me, build consensus. And I'm going to play, um, it's about a minute, oops, I don't want to delete it, um, about a minute and a half. Um, I'll just put this up to the microphone.
It was planning. And the one thing that we did with a lot of our, that those funds, we spent money on professional development. I say now, a lot of times when I'm explaining our experiential learning model, you can't be it if you can't see it. The same is true with educators. So during the first year, we took a lot of our people that we really wanted to make this change out to other communities to see it in action. And so that first year to eighteen months, we spent a lot of time studying, researching. We were in a lot of meetings, and there was a lot of, uh, you know, back and forth, trying to build consensus on what we wanted this to look like and building structure. So I look back now, we were building structures and processes to make this this ship stay afloat. The first thing we did was start a freshman academy, because we felt like, you know, the first thing, and we've got these ninth graders, and we know ninth grade's where you lose kids, that's where dropouts occur. And so we, the first thing we want to do is do freshman academy and do it well. And so really, we had several schools, and we did that for a couple of years. That's, we were just trying to get good at being, having freshman academies. And then we sort of phased in wall-to-wall career academies with grades ten through twelve. And and so it took, it took a little while, and so it was on into about two thousand and ten before we were wall-to-wall, all-grade levels with both freshman academy and our career and thematic academies, grades ten through twelve.
Uh, you know, I was.
So, I mean, that was the first that I had heard that Nashville um was really, they went slow to go fast. Um, they held on to freshman acad, they implemented freshman academies for a while at some of their schools before expanding district-wide um in the wall-to-wall career academies. Um, and similar, so I think it was about a seven-year timeframe from what I was able to piece together. And similarly, um, the academies of Akron, and they have like a whole history section on their webpage, um, their vision came from the Nashville model uh round about early two thousand and eleven. Um, about school year six in November twenty fifteen, they identified one high school as a pilot academy location, and then they pursued seed funding. Um, the academies and their pilot, um, the pilot academy were only, was only launched in school year eight, and then in school year ten, sophomores were enrolled in district-wide academies. Um, so my question is, ASD is planning to implement freshman academies. I mean, this is a planning year, year one. There's freshman academies uh that are being proposed for year two, and then we're moving immediately um district-wide, uh, those freshman academies in district-wide for wall-to-wall academies in year three. But each of these other major models have chosen a go-slow-to-go-fast model. And um right now, I'm, I feel like we're in the situation of the grant tail wagging the dog. So we've received this fifteen-million-dollar grant to implement this uh wall-to-wall career academies. Over five years, fifteen million dollars is great, but you know, if we're managing, I don't know, like a six-hundred-million-dollar general fund budget each year, that's like three billion dollars. So fifteen million dollars out of three billion. I feel like we should be um more, we might need to be more thoughtful and nuanced. Do we need to be more thoughtful, nuanced, and either pilot an academy process in a fully-resourced way for high-needs schools or high-needs students? Or should we, like the Nashville system, have an approach that says, do freshman academies do them well for a period of time? And I feel like both of those are viable options, and um I know that we've received this grant from the federal government in the way that it was written. But I don't think that that grant that the board didn't have a hand in writing should necessarily be the thing that that points us in a certain direction. So I guess I I'm inviting the board to weigh in, and that is really my hope in having this conversation right now, and and as needed, um, perhaps to bring um e-extend that conversation into a finance committee meeting in about a week, and we could perhaps produce a substitute memo that would say, maybe the board would like to proceed down path A of a pilot model or path B of a multi-year freshman academy model. Uh, because um if you go back in board documents, you know, this was, I think, launched around December of twenty seventeen with a visit of a number of administrators to Nashville. Um, and there was a vision that was that was shared with the board, you know, that a number of years ago. Um, since then, our, but we've seen that that slide of, you know, here's our deficit growing and growing and growing, and um we've got a ninety-something-million-dollar deficit projected for F Y twenty-six. Um, I think it's another twenty million dollars the year after. So when, you know, we're being told that implementing the academies in a wall-to-wall system is going to cost another three-and-a-half billion dollars, um, I think that's cause for significant concern. And then when you think that the staff that's being covered by the grant from the federal department, you know, Department of Education, that's paying for eight career academy coaches and four assistant principals, that's probably another one-and-a-half million dollars. You know, once that grant goes away, I'm kind of assuming that that three-and-a-half million dollars bumps up to like five million dollars. Um, and that's just sort of basic staffing investments. So these are real, I mean, this board was not super excited to increase P T R this year or cut ignite or cut immersion. Um, so I guess I'm asking for some feedback from the board, maybe from the finance committee specifically, to bring it back to the board about what value may or may not see in piloting, you know, you know, re, trying to reallocate this remarkable federal grant towards a more fully-resourced pilot opportunity or opportunities. You know, if you pick two schools, you figure out how to do transportation between them. Um, or or a freshman academy, so I'm going to pause there.
Other members with comments, member Higgins?
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. Um, I I I'm looking at the Academy of Assassin's, I mean, the Academy uh from uh from the standpoint of feedback from the community, from the business community, and from the groups that we've got. We've got strong support. I think there's a lot of benefits to it. But I think the question is, is it feasible at this point? If we can't fill the jobs that we've got already, we're going to be dependent upon more jobs. We're going to be trying to do something. It it's directly being held at by by the legislature in the state. If we are not getting the funding necessary to maintain, we're going to be asked next year to make massive cuts across, all over the place. We're going to be, the year after that, we have not got a guarantee of funding after this. We got one-time funding. We're going to be right back again, where we're going to be presenting a budget that's going to have to assume that we are a hundred million dollars down uh and what we're going, how we're going to handle it. We're going to have to uh get some money in this year that will help, that will allow some savings to carry over to another year, but we just don't have the funds. And and we need to be honest with the public a little bit and say, if the state's not willing to, if the state's making us cut everything and 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 there is, we want to go forward with alternatives that might improve academic outcomes. It might improve opportunities for kids, all that. But we also, I don't know how we're going to be able to say this is already a priority when we haven't looked at all we got to cut, because, you know, uh, uh, the amount of money we're cutting next year is, then we got the big cut the year after that. Again, every year, we're using up the reserves that we've got. We're not going to have them, and we have no commitment right now from the state. This year, we will, fortunately, it was an election year coming up. Next year is not. I don't know what the legislature will do next year. I'm sorry, there was not a buy-in um that the state's obligated to adequately fund public education in the state of Alaska. So I'm, my concern here is going forward, I I'm not opposed to the academies at all. I I I think there were some issues with it, but are we going to better add more teachers to help do this when we can't fill the jobs we've got? I don't think so. We we don't have the funding for teachers. We don't have the benefit program. We don't have a lot of stuff out there. So my reservation on this one is just the feasibility of it when we are so inadequately funded by the state for what the what the Anchorage School District needs. And we need the, we need the business community to know that if they want this, if they want these proposals, we've got to have them out there also promoting the fact that we need to be adequately funded. We can't give a per, a perception that we have adequate funds when we don't. And that's where we are right now, and the community needs to be told, we want this, we want these approaches, we want these things. But at the same time, are we going to cut hockey? That'd get everybody's attention. Um, that, we we're not trying to shoot for that, but but we're going to be without filling teacher jobs, okay? Because we can't pay enough, we can't get the benefits, we can't fill them. And so trying to do this with inadequate funding, but to even get, keep the teachers that we've got filled, I just don't see where the resources are there to do it. And I think we got to be careful how we're notifying the public that we can do it, because even with federal funds, if we dedicate those funds, that assumes those funds can be spent to hire teachers. And it's not happening, uh, not with the current situation we've got right now. I don't believe that's going to have any hope.
Other comments by board members? Member Bellamy?
I, but I don't even know where to start, but I do not have the same reservations that I'm hearing. Um, I I know, we know that we're going to have a deficit every year until something changes statutorily in the B S A or something happens legislatively. But this, this is different. This is an opportunity for all of our kids, a- and and from my experience, we've been at this for seven years. We started in twenty seventeen. I came on the board in twenty nineteen. We adopted the college, the 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 C C L goal. We didn't know what it was going to look like, but we charged the superintendent then and now to help us figure that out. And this is the plan that's before us. Now, I I know that you can't get blood out of a turnip, but I also know that this is the, one of the first uh uh opportunities that we have had and have been engaged with in the, with the public. And I believe that they will help support this program. I really do, in more than just their time and their talents. So a lot of work has has gone into this plan. I think, I mean, everybody has to come at it from their own experience, uh, but really, I think we have put this off so long, and if we're not willing to risk it for our kids, then I don't know who else is going to do it, if not us. Who else is going to do it? So we've got to ask ourselves a whole lot of things, uh, but at the, at the same time, I mean, yes, can we walk and chew gum at the same time? I believe we can. Is it going to be challenging? Yes, it will be. Will we have every dime that we need? No, we will not. But do we just stop still? So I I plan to support the plan, and I plan to work hard to make sure that we can support the 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 items in the plan as best we can as a board, and then reach out to the community and to anybody else that might have money, the feds, who might have money that we can get to make this work for our kids, ultimately for our community. Thank you.
Member Wilson?
I I have the privilege of having unique perspective of not just a board member, but a business partner that's been involved with the district for, gosh, twenty-four years now. I've I've seen our school business partnership program go from um, at the time, the superintendent was hesitant about business involvement in the schools because she was worried about um branding of the schools. I've seen it go from that to now. Our business community has advocated for education, particularly this past year. Our business community, our nonprofit community, our community partners have advocated for education like I have never seen before. And that is, I truly believe, because they feel like they are part of the educational process. They feel like they are a partially responsible and accountable for for making sure that our students are prepared for their next step once they graduate. And they're, they've stepped forward by providing thousands of hours, literally. I mean, the tactic teams combined have put in thousands of hours, and these are not, I mean, some of the tactic team members are A S D, A S D employees, but most of them are not. They're invested in the academies beca, and and they're invested in our students and our schools like I have never seen before, and I have been involved at that level for the past twenty-four years. The academies of Anchorage, I was in a meeting today, and there was a community member who was advocating for the academies. And there was a community member who was advocating for the academies of Anchorage because he's invested, he's, he's, he in particular has invested, like many others, in the tactic team hours. And he was extremely confident about how important it is, how accessible these academies will be to our students. And he was, he was our biggest advocate. And he's one of so many that are our biggest advocate, community advocates right now because they feel like they're part of this process, because they are part of this process, because they have been part of this process, because they wanna make sure that our students have what they need in order to succeed. And stay in Alaska if that's what they so choose, or whatever their next step is. UAA has been an amazing partner. The, the partners that spoke, the, the steering committee members that spoke here today have all been amazing advocates. And they, I, I truly believe that they will continue to build that that level of continued advocacy for education funding. But I, I greatly appreciate all of the hours, all of the time that our community members have put into this academy's process. I, I don't wanna see it go backwards, going backwards would be burning bridges rather than building them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just wanna echo member Wilson's comments where there may be other communities out there that have larger investment in school funding than we do in Alaska, but I will say, and the Ford NGL team has affirmed this, that we have some of the highest engagement internationally. They work with districts all over the world, um, and all over the country, and there's no other city um, than Anchorage that's got more business community members, parents, families involved in this work than in Anchorage. And I think that's something very special, no matter where the board decides to go with the allocations of funding. I think that there's a lot of power in it, for example, the AEDC, for the first time that I can recall, um, advocated for school funding on behalf of ASD, and it was specifically because of our investment in the academies of Anchorage. And I think that's just the tip of the iceberg. I, I would love a board member to correct me if there's been a time where you had a, an executive with Alaska Airlines, the provost and the AEDC all in front of us, talking about, we've really done something right. You know, I heard a comment earlier today that, you know, if we just keep on doing the same thing, we're never going to improve our outcomes. Well, I will applaud this board that we've taken the time to thoroughly vet a number of fantastic initiatives, including the start times, including the academies, including the professional learning communities, because we wanted to do things differently to achieve the board adopted goals and guardrails, and those were set by the board, and I can't think of one initiative that's more laser line to the goal that was set by the board than the academies of Anchorage. I'm just one voice at the table, but I would be remiss if I didn't speak on behalf of thousands of community leaders, elected officials and others, family members, teachers who've been involved, who've gone to Nashville, who've put in a, a lot of work and time into that hundred and fifty-page document that's before the board for review. Uh, I'll, I'll leave it there, but I think the sentiment, uh, just me as an individual, um, at this dais, there may be a temptation to wait for the cavalry to come and save us, whether that, uh, member of the cavalry is a member of the legislature or some other person in Juneau, but frankly, in my opinion, the cavalry is here. And I think that there's a lot of power at this dais to move in the right direction, regardless of academies or not. Um, but I cannot be silent when something is solely there aligned to the very vision that was set by the people at this table. So thank you for your timing and consideration.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I, remember lessons, I wanna indicate I appreciate your comments and perspective and um, I, for one, would be happy to, um, participate and listen, while we have a special meeting of our finance committee to drill down into what it looks like. One of the, I don't know that's an exact comparable, but I, I was looking back at, um, some of the conversations we had regarding school start times, and we were going back and forth. And what got lost in some of those who were opposed to any change whatsoever is that there's clear data that says that the, the current bell schedule, not just at ASD, but significant number of, of schedules nationwide actively harms adolescents' physical and mental health. And so keeping in mind that the status quo does have negative impacts. I translate that to the academy's conversation, which is to say that if the legislature takes no action and the board chooses not to implement the academies of Anchorage, uh, there will still be challenges that our district has to navigate. Uh, it may not be cutting the academies of Anchorage funding or, um, CTE-related items, but it could be increasing class sizes K three, and so I think the function of our district and not just ours, but statewide, the function of public education in Alaska hinges on the legislature taking action to address in a meaningful way, the, their failure to inflation-proof sixty percent of our budget, but much more than other parts of the state. So funding is a concern for me for sure, uh, but not directly related just to the academy's model. With that said, I'm, I'm all for getting, um, every board member the information they need. As I mentioned earlier, I, I lean to support, especially because, um, as was alluded to now by a couple speakers, um, this is the largest contingent of community stakeholders I've seen involved in, um, any initiative the district's undertaken. And I did note, you know, AEDC speaking out, um, to support public education, um, which hasn't always been the case um, regarding funding specifically, and that's great, that we're seeing that level of engagement. I did have specific questions and I'll maybe I'll, I'll take the time, as we're, we have it on the agenda, and we ran out of time in our work session earlier. I, we, we kind of explored the the concept of adding an academy, um, regarding fine arts. A, a piece of information I would appreciate before our next meeting is if, if the board did choose to add an academy, um, would there be a fourth at, uh, East, for example? Um, or replacing an academy for whatever reason? I'm curious as to what it would look like, what we, what opportunities we could lose if we choose to do that. And so as a data point, I would appreciate, and it's kind of my first wondering, and then, Mr. President, if we can't answer that now, and I assume we can't, and been added to the RFI log or whatnot, I have, uh, another kind of serious wonderings I'd like to get into if I could.
I, I don't have the complete answer, member Jacobs, but I'd love to give, um, the board some, something to noodle on regarding that. So the question is, could the district adopt some sort of fine arts academy? Um, the answer is we could. Um, I have seen other academy models that have adopted, let's say, a college prep academy, we certainly could. Um, and that's not outside the realm of possibility, but I would want to inform the board as to the trade-offs. I will say that the, the design that we've adopted is one that's a wall-to-wall current technical education focus. If we were to go down the road of offering a college prep academy or a fine arts academy, we would lose that fidelity. I'm not saying that that's a non-starter, but I will say that the change that we're proposing is philosophical and that we're saying current technical education for all, it's the expectation. It's not something that you're tracked into because somebody told you you need to go to trade tool. It's something that we realize is a universal skill for all of our students, so I would say that our design really keeps the equity of the student experience in mind. And, and going back to the schedules that we discussed earlier today, I am a huge advocate for the fine arts and other opportunities to enrich your education. And one of the powerful things about a seven-period schedule or an eight-period schedule is you can essentially complete the equivalent of an academy. Remember, an academy is a sequence of four courses, and in our design, we're, uh, mandating that students take four courses related or about, um, a pathway that leads to a career. With that said, with a seven-period schedule or an eight-period schedule, you can do the same thing for band or fine arts or debate, because you can take a complete sequence of courses of electives in addition to your academy. So it's not an either-or, it really is, um, preparing our students to fully delve into the CTE pathway that we're philosophically saying is a high standard for all students, as well as whatever their unique passion may be, whether that's band or orchestra or fine art. So for that reason, there's not a fine arts academy, but that's because we're empowering students to really delve in. I mean, potentially a student could take eight classes in theater if that were their passion, if we had eight classes in theater. But I, I think you, you get the point, that the reason why we're advocating for additions to the schedule is that we wanna maintain the fidelity of a wall-to-wall current technical education model, which links to careers and high-waist jobs that our community is asking for in addition to the, um, extracurricular and, uh, non-academic interests of students such as theater. So that's a, a long-winded explanation that I, I hope we can noodle on, that we're not uh, taking away an opportunity to specialize or focus on theater. It would just be in addition to the district expectation that we're proposing of CTE for all.
Mr. President, can I follow up? Uh, yes, member Jacobs?
Yep, thank you, appreciate that. And I, I, I think it's a fair answer, and it paired with, um, Dr. Johnson's response that, um, survey data indicated a significant portion of the community wasn't interested in a, a fine arts academy. Maybe that's the, um, the best fit for our community at this point, uh, if we were to implement the academy model. Uh, I've, I've just tried to be cognizant that, uh, school districts more than ever really need to ensure that we're, um, constantly examining how we can best serve students and provide options that our families want and deserve. And so, um, as we get started and get this master plan off the ground, this would be the, the first time for at least a year that we'll have the chance to, um, examine that question, so I appreciate that. Um, a separate wondering I've, I've had that I, I still can't quite square, um, and I, I had sent in earlier via email. My understanding, I don't have the institutional knowledge that many in our room do, um, is that King Tech came to be out of a desire to implement something like a, academies of Anchorage, but not having the staff and the resources to bring CTE to every comprehensive high school. If we are implementing and, and bringing that vision, um, to our high schools, I'm, I'm wondering if we're doing a disservice to efficiency and providing the best opportunities for all students by continuing to operate King Tech as a high school in addition to, um, providing all of the CTE opportunities uh, for students on a part-time basis, or specifically for a third session, where I think we have a partnership with a, a rural school district that is really well-received and provides district, uh, students opportunities that we might not otherwise have. And so could the administration speak to what it went through in terms of process for uh, the examining, focusing our work at King Tech regarding academy work and and no longer operating King Tech as a high school in addition to all that work, if that makes sense, thanks.
Sure, and I may need to call on the cavalry for some of that, but I, I think from my seat, uh, what I can say is that King Tech plays a very special role in that, you know, has a history here in the district. And the other thing is that we think about economies of scale, we think about the economics of pulling this off with fidelity. I think strategically, King Tech makes a lot of sense in that, let's say that you don't have a particular pathway of interest to you. King Tech offers that hub, a district-wide hub to not only enroll in a, a pathway of particular interest to a student, but also the pathways that would be the most complex and most cost-intensive to offer in all of our buildings. And there are specific features unique to that building that wouldn't be financially feasible, at least in our initial phases, to, to do all at once. So that could provide a pathway, um, to still offer, um, very infrastructure-intensive current technical pathways, but within a hub, um, in which it's much more feasible for the district to scale transporting students to a King Tech versus transporting an East High School student to Chugyak. So in terms of the economies of pulling this off, um, I, I think we should lean into our assets, which would be King Tech, and that, that's how we got there.
I followed one last time, Mr. President.
Thank you, um, so, Dr. Bryant, I, I will hardly agree with you that it, it strikes me that it's more efficient to um, have a, a student from West Anchorage transported to, to King Tech than Eagle River Chugyak if they find an academy that they like there. I guess that's, I'm wondering if there's a potential to further efficiency to district operations. And does a, a, a high school at King Tech also make sense versus just leaning into the academy and CTE work? Um, given the number of students that are enrolled at, at King Tech. My understanding is that right now, there aren't enough students at the school to qualify for specific funding. That's not my area of expertise, and maybe I have that fact wrong.
Um, member Jacobs, could you clarify, are you, uh, speaking to the advantage of multiple CT hubs versus academies and a hub?
Sure, so I guess it would be, my, my question is, could we better use King Tech, um, not as a, a high school and um, but really focusing on everything but using King Tech as a high school experience for students and using it as a, a hub uh, primarily and only. Um, are there, are there ways that we could have those students that currently attend King Tech as a high school, um, bringing those back to our comprehensive schools and then focusing that work, providing as many experiences as we can for students at that hub that is King Tech to avoid having to transport students, um, to multiple schools in the district?
Yeah, that one I'd wanna carefully consult with the team, I might be missing some logistics, um, if we don't have a answer now, do we? I'll invite the staff if you'd like to provide some context, but no pressure, um, because I, I'd like to give that question some diligence.
So thanks for the question, um, I would just add to Dr. Bryant's response, um, that part of our planning process, now that, um, we have identified where the academies would be located at the eight comprehensive high schools, that part of our next phase of, of work will be working with King Tech to figure out much of the logistics that you're talking about and how we do lean into King Tech and utilize those facilities more readily. So, um, that is, that is part of our planning process in the next phase. Um, that said, um, part of King Tech's efficiencies also come from looking at, um, current technical education opportunities for students that aren't in our comprehensive eight schools, so our alternative programs, our charter schools, um, some of our homeschool students also access King Tech as a resource. So when we're looking at CTE as a priority, um, education experience in the district through an academy's model, King Tech serves a purpose for those students as well. Um, and, um, in terms of equity across our district, um, so I, I think that there's still a large conversation around King Tech and how we can lean into it, um, more efficiently, as you noted.
I'm willing to keep talking if you'll let me, Mr. President. I'm sorry, second. I'm willing to keep talking if you'll let me, but I understand we have other board members here.
Let's ask his question and then we'll come back.
I guess I just wanna make some clarification, I'm not opposed to the academies. I support changes, I support improvements, and I believe this will accomplish it. Um, but I'm looking at options. Uh, are we, when we start cutting money, are we gonna, if we have seventy teacher openings next year, you know, we're gonna fill positions for the academies and cut out positions and increase class sizes and different grades and eliminate programs in the night program and the, and, and music and art and everything, I don't know what all we're gonna do. But we're gonna end up with options. And everything has benefits and it has costs. It's kinda like the issue of Bartlett. Uh, they have seventy-five percent of seventy, seventy-five million is in the deferred maintenance. I wanna see the full list of deferred maintenance, apparently you have a comprehensive list, so I'm gonna be requesting that so I can see the comparison, okay? Just because it's deferred maintenance doesn't mean it's equal, okay? And we know that, and so I'm gonna challenge that, uh, cause I wanna see the numbers, I wanna see the figures and justification for it. And in this case, I just wanna know the fallback plan, if nothing else, if we can't fill the teacher job and use the federal funds for it. We might be to do some stuff that way, but if we don't have the teachers, where are we gonna cut the teachers? When we cut teachers or we don't fill teachers, we don't fill what they were teaching. That's a big deal, and that's where my concern's at. So I'm interested from the budget perspective of having an understanding, not this is what we recommend, but rather, these are the options. I wanna see more information like that and not so much, hey, we made the decision, here it is. I'm tired of that. I, I feel like we get that in the budget, I feel like we get that in the presentations, we hear all the positives without the pros and cons. It's one-sided, we need to hear both sides. And there's always two sides to even the best possible decision, and that's all I'm asking for, I think that's the board's responsibility.
Yep, and we'll go back to member Jacobs.
All right, let, uh, we're gonna do the scheduled programming. The other, uh, the last wondering I had on my, on my list, which we haven't had a chance to address yet is, um, there are parents who have expressed a desire to see, um, their child experience, uh, life at a comprehensive, um, ASD high school that doesn't include the academy model. And I'm curious as to the research we've done, have any, um, grant recipients or, or Ford? I'm curious as to the research we've done, have any, um, grant recipients or, or Ford NGL programs implemented some sort of opt-out for parents who truly can't get invested in this opportunity for students? And are there, is there language in our grant which prevents us from allowing parents who are truly don't see the vision and want something different for their student, but still want to enroll their student in an ASD high school to opt out?
Uh, I may need to request Dr. Johnson for the more global context, but in sum, it is possible to design academies that don't have that explicit, um, sequence of career options that we've laid out. Um, but again, the drawback is that if you provide some sort of opt-out, you can also create, uh, you can also stratify your student population, um, unknowingly. And this, um, really ensures a quality standard of, um, current technical education pathways linked to high-demand careers, um, in Alaska and beyond for students. And, um, that could be put at risk, um, if we were to veer from it. But it's not something that is, you know, uh, that, it's not something that we shouldn't at least deliberate and consider. Dr. Johnson?
Sure, um, just to add to that, um, the board Next Generation Learning Model is about what we call wall-to-wall academies. So it is for every student that said in communities where needs have arisen. We've talked about some of those things that have started to, um, come forward here in Anchorage, such as fine arts or, um, college preparatory experiences. There are communities that have developed academies around those needs from the community so that if, for example, they don't want their student involved in a construction pathway, um, and they would rather have them be involved in a very targeted, um, college preparatory experience, that we can shift the model to include those things. Um, there are communities that have IB academies, like, um, IB that's present at West. So there's options there for us to consider, um, but, but Ford would not recommend an opt-out model because what, what happens in that model would be, um, what we essentially do now, which is called Pocket Academies. We have really great programs that operate, um, independently and only some of our students have that experience. So when we look at the academies approach, if there's particular needs that arise here in Anchorage that we need to address through the model, um, the recommendation for equity across our district is to develop those experiences that are really essential based on our community feedback.
And just to add to Dr. Johnson's point, again, it is completely within the realm of possibility we could do a fine arts academy or an IB academy, but we want to make sure that we advise the board about the risk of doing that. And I think one of the powerful things about a wall-to-wall academy is that you're saying that every student, whether your aspirations are college and graduate school or, uh, an entry-level job, um, there's a lot of value to be gained from, um, studying, let's say, arts media and marketing or public service or education, um, to at least explore what you don't know. And I, I just, um, caution the board to deeply consider that if we were to go down a path of creating a college prep academy, we're kind of, um, restarting this national conversation that's been going on for years around college versus careers. And when I think about my career in Houston, I often thinks of the, the types of students that were told, oh, your career track. And I, that's not the type of system that I would want to create. Um, there's certainly a lot of baggage when you create those stratifications. And the powerful thing about this is that we're saying that there's something really special about studying various pathways, regardless of whether you're going to college, uh, or career, it's about college and career. So it's really philosophical and intentional. Um, but that's not, that's not to say that you can't go down that path, other districts have. But I wanted to be clear about the rationale, and it's really grounded in equity and to make sure that all students are really excited about the idea about learning about careers that they'll end up in, whether it's an entry-level job right out of high school or within an industry with their college degree.
Um, if I could add one more thing, Dr. Bryant, um, the other, the other thing I would point to the board or point out to the board is, um, the profile of the graduate document that was developed as a part of this process. There were, um, hundreds of people that contributed to that document. Within that document is a lot of essentially soft skills or, or what I like to call employability skills that our community has, um, weighed in and asked for, um, out of our graduates. And it's very congruent to the feedback that the board received, um, in 2020 when they were, when we were working through the new, um, board goals for college career and life ready. So our community and our parents and, and even our teachers internally that contributed to that, um, document really identified some, um, skills that they would like to see across the academies model, um, that are outcomes for our kids. And, and a lot of those things are taught through relevant experiences through that career lens, if you will, that happens in the academy. If you're, um, just taking high-level, um, advanced placement courses as, as an example, you may not get those real-world, career-oriented lenses, um, in the skills that you need for that, that next step. So that, that would be another caution, I would say, when we're looking at that, um, portrait of a graduate and what our community is asking for.
Member Wilson.
Um, I think the Portrait of a Graduate is a really beautiful document. I guess I take, I have maybe a Phil- sorry, I'll speak loudly, is that better? Um, I think that many of those skills can be and should be embedded in the K-12 system. Um, I was helping out, um, at an orienteering event with my third grader last week. Uh, so we were running on the muddy trails, uh, in the hillside system. And I had a team of three third-grade boys, and three of them wanted to run, and one of them wanted none of it, and the fourth wanted none of it. And we talked a lot about being part of a team. And so I spent the better part of an hour working on the concept of teamwork, um, in the mud, uh, trying to get from points A to Z, um, with these kiddos. My point being that we can't relegate soft skills to grades nine through twelve, right? They have to be, I expect my kids, I expect all kids to be learning those Portrait of a Graduate skills, you know, really from day one, right? That's what an amazing kindergarten teacher does. Everything in life, we learn from kindergarten, right? We've all seen that poster. Um, so I think that they, they can be developed in high school and in the rest of the system. Um, I wanted to ask a question from, um, because I, I guess I still believe in, the potential for the community to learn from a pilot program or a multi-year freshman academy option. Right, I don't think that either of those exclude the business community. They allow us to generate, um, experience and buy-in and develop, continue to develop plans. Um, but I'm, I know that, um, there was a pilot course of, uh, the freshman academy this past semester. And I wonder, and we haven't heard about it, it was, uh, discussed in the master plan. And I wonder if, uh, there are any takeaways from that pilot freshman academy semester that can be shared with the board at this time? Like, have we, has, has ASD learned anything from that freshman seminar? That was, I think, at Service this, this past winter.
Dr. Johnson, yeah, I believe that Service has a, a more longer-term history with the freshman, uh, course within their, um, school, within a school, the Shamaal, but I'll let Dr. Johnson explain.
And if you want to just stay there for a while, listen.
Yeah, just sit.
Yeah, I, I was kind of thinking that as I was walking up. Um, so, um, to speak to your question, Member Wilsons, um, the freshman academy career exploration course is currently ongoing. Um, we piloted, we're in the middle of the pilot bit, so the class ends tomorrow so we can have better data around grades and things of that nature, and we plan, we are planning to do that. That said, um, my team has worked really closely with Debbie Benson, who is the pilot teacher at Service High School. Um, Debbie Benson is a really respected, well-known educator, she's been at Service for quite a while. Um, and she actually volunteered to help pilot, um, and create, um, tweaks as the semester has gone on. I will say that students anecdotally have reported really liking the course. Um, and there have been some things that we have worked out so that it goes more smoothly next year for other students. Um, like anytime you initiate a course, there, there's, you know, troubleshooting to do. But overall, it's been really successful, um, kids have been really happy. Um, Debbie Benson reports, um, that it being a really valuable class for kids. Um, and I will say that to Dr. Bryant's point, that we have some history with freshman academy. Um, there was a time in our district where three of our high schools, Service was one of them, where the pilot is taking place, um, had a freshman academy in place, but they didn't have a specific course, um, like freshman academy career exploration, but rather the team of teachers, um, a role focus on having freshmen in one part of the building. So it was a little bit different model than, than what we're kind of proposing here. This is a little bit more robust, it's district-supported, it'll be across our system.
Uh, Wilsons.
Thank you for, for bringing that up. I, that sort of came up as, as I realized, um, I, I realized as I learned about what Anchorage is doing, that it had had a, a, an academy model for freshmen in the past. And I was speaking to somebody who's been in the district longer, uh, than I've lived here. Um, and, and they shared that, uh, I think that that freshman academy system was grant-funded from the legislature. Um, and so it was focused on small class sizes. And so that the freshman academy sort of option went away once the funding went away.
Yeah, there's some truth to that. Each school, there were three schools that kind of engaged in freshman academy. At one time, it was Diamond Service and Bartlett. Each one of them had a little bit different flavor to their model. Um, they were definitely homegrown, um, self-funded, um, programs within our district, which is a stark difference from what we're suggesting our freshman academy now, um, look like. We're looking at more centralized uniformity across our district. Our goal is that all of our freshmen have a great onboarding experience to high school and that we really, um, specifically key in on, um, their academic success right out of the gate because of that freshman failure rate and what that means for them later on, um, towards graduation.
Um, thank you for the chance to ask a couple more questions, I know it's getting late. Um, one question that I had, you, you sort of brought up, we were talking a little about funding, um, every high school right now, from what I understand, is going to have a Health Academy in some way. So I was thinking about, you know, there's more than eight of us up here, but if, you know, each of us more or less were a Health Academy at a different school. Um, and, and Health Academy Bellamy received a donation of volunteer time and Health Academy Lessons received a substantial donation of, uh, supplies. And Health Academy Wilson received a generous donation of just dollars. How, how do you balance out those different inputs? Like, uh, to, to ensure that we all have supplies and volunteers and dollars?
Sure, so, um, that's part of the Resource Management Tactic Team's job as we move into this model. Um, so part of what they're going to set up are those funding structures and, um, donation-receiving structures and how that works. Um, schools already have different donation levels, um, and, and so that does exist. Like, some schools have a very strong, um, parent organization that donates to them or alumni so, uh, association. So we already have some of those inequities in our system from a donation standpoint. But the Resource Management Team, um, is gonna develop processes to ensure that we have a basic level of equity across our district. And there may be particular projects that, um, are donated to specific schools in the future. But that's part of our job as a district to say, here's our baseline, this is what we want every student to receive, um, through this model. And, and that's where those processes will be, um, kind of developed through that Resource Management Team.
I appreciate hearing that.
Member Wilson.
So I, I wanted to dovetail a little bit on, uh, what Member Jacob said about King Tech. I've, I've heard, and actually it was, um, a teacher when I was touring Betty Davis East High School, um, one of the CTE teachers there that said that King Tech is the, is really a fabulous opportunity for a capstone course because at the high school level, the, the teachers do a lot of the basic kind of introductory. Um, and, and King Tech would, is a great opportunity for the more advanced level, um, of what they're studying and, and pretty much any of the, the programs that they have there. And it's, it's truly a highly respected program, um, with their business partners. They've, they've done a tremendous amount of work over the years building those, uh, and building that reputation. So my, I guess my question is, is twofold. The, are, are we looking at King Tech as being, I, I know you said that some of the researches are, is being done and developed in regards to King Tech, but are we looking at King Tech being a capstone program or pre-apprenticeship program, depending on the program? Um, so that our students have the opportunity of each of these high schools to, to do the, the basic um, learning and, and building and then build into the capstone program? Um, and then I, I have a follow-up, but.
Sure, um, yeah, no, that's a great question, Member Wilson. Um, so the answer is yes to all of that. Um, so there, in my mind, in the planning, um, I see two different lanes for King Tech. There are, um, and, and this will be developed through a lot of input as well. I, I wouldn't say that this is the be-all and end-all because as we identify the academies now at the, the high schools, it, it then creates the opportunity to develop those capstone programs. Um, so what we will do through this planning process around the academies is, um, start to set up our industry councils and capitalize on some of those industry councils that are present at King Tech. So we're not taxing people, um, too much all over for different projects because I know that there's those, those real robust relationships at King Tech that we can utilize for advising across the district. But, um, so we will start to look at those capstone experiences through industry councils and developing the sequence of courses that students need within a pathway. There will be students who want to advance more readily within that field of study. And in those cases, um, a capstone at King Tech will be a great option for a number of reasons. One is because they are attending there for half of their schedule. So there's actually more time to dive into a particular subject matter and go deeper, um, and further with it. The other is a connection with King Tech and the Career and Technical College at UAA. Um, and, and AMCS is also there. So there's that, um, additional opportunity to partner with UAA. So if, even if they exceed the capstone, um, experience at King Tech, then they have options at the college level as well, um, to further or to go into apprenticeships like some of our students already do or pre-apprenticeships, as you suggested. Um, and students are then hired right out of high school into those programs, um, to get started. The other part of King Tech that I see, um, staying is that, um, the superintendent, um, kind of, um, discussed this earlier, what, there are particular facilities, um, that need to stay at King Tech that we can't replicate at all eight of our high schools. Um, but the very concrete example I use, um, quite often is like our auto body, um, shop at King Tech. It's, it's like walking into a, an auto body shop at, at a car dealership where you would take to service your car. That's not, um, a feasible thing for us from a capital standpoint to invest in at all of our high schools. So if a student is really interested in that particular pathway, then King Tech is still a very viable option through this model, um, to utilize our, our facilities effectively. So, um, so King Tech is still a really vital part of this, this equation, for sure.
The other, the other question I have is regarding the, the all-day high school at King Tech, um, that has not been nearly as utilized by our students as the hope was when the high school was created, um, through King Tech. So are, is there, uh, analysis being done to determine if the high school should continue there or if it should just continue as, as it had before as a career and technical school?
Sure, and I might, um, kick this over to our Chief Academic Officer, too. We've had a lot of discussion about that, um, i- and I think, Member Jacobs, you alluded to like numbers and funding. If we get to a certain threshold, we receive state funding as a full-time school. Um, and so we are under that threshold, um, currently, but we have real, I, I truly believe, um, moving into an academies model, that there are gonna, students that are gonna identify that, um, current technical education is really something that they're passionate about and they want to dive into more. And this, and having a full-time high school experience at King Tech around that, um, could be very viable for more kids that aren't necessarily exposed to it earlier in their high school career to make that choice to go to King Tech full-time. So I, I do believe there's a lot of work that we can do to, to increase that enrollment. And I still think it's, it's a, a good program for a lot of students. Um, not every student fits the mold of a comprehensive high school and, and we see that across our district in many forms with our many alternative programs and choices. Um, and, and so I see King Tech as a full-time experience, still a viable choice, um, for a lot of our kids.
Um, I wanted to talk about, um, sort of plans for enrolling and, and transferring as needed. So I think my general understanding is that you go to your neighborhood high school for ninth grade. Um, you choose your pathway at the end of ninth grade and you enroll, I'm sorry, you choose your academy and your pathway, uh, within the, at the end of the ninth grade year, and you enroll ideally in your homeschool for tenth grade. uh, within the, at the end of the ninth grade year and you enroll ideally in your homeschool for 10th grade. If you choose, so there's a couple of points of movement that I see. Number one is if you, you know, student, parent, family unit look at all of the eight high schools ahead of time before ninth grade begins. You know, and say, gee, I really want to do mechatronics at South. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Uh, but I live, you know, at, you know, I go to Diamond or I go to East or I go to West. Um, so before ninth grade begins, my family tries to get me into that, you know, can, can I as an eighth grader going into ninth grader with my eyes on, ahead of time? Can I try to lottery into South, you know, into that one program?
Yeah. So it would, it would follow our normal lottery process and, and honestly, um, even without academies as a model, a lot of our students do that already. Um, and they lottery in um, two different high schools for different reasons, um, their ninth grade year. And so that's something that's actively used. And in this model would still be a viable option for families.
Okay. So lottery is still going to be available before pathways are chosen?
Yes.
But now let's say I'm the same high school student at Diamond or East or West. I'm a ninth grader and I realize I want to go to South for the mechatronics uh, academy. Will I have that opportunity? Will I have less of an opportunity? To pivot there? Does it depend if I'm male or female? I mean, how does the sorting hat work?
So that's part of um, the work in terms of as we start to plan our career academies. The, the answer is yes, you would still be able to lottery in. It would depend on a lot of things, like are there seats available at that school? So students who are in that neighborhood school, just like they are now in our lottery process um, would take priority. However, students would still be able to, to uh, lottery in and we would start to look at those workforce trends, because we don't want all males in our construction pathways, as an example. We want to, to spread that out. Um, and so those are things that are evaluated through the lottery process now, um, in terms of balancing ratios and things like that. So um, we, we want to continue with our open policy of, of families being able to use the lottery to choose their programs. Um, and so that wouldn't necessarily change in this model.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
Also, thank you, Mr. Gustafson, President. All men, we, at this point, we would not be looking at like opening specific pathways into the lottery. We, it would be lotterying into the school. And then through the selection process of getting into a specific pathway, I don't see us having sixty-four, whatever pathways that we have on our lottery application. It, it would be if you want to go to South for that specific program, you could lottery into South. And it would be after the ninth grade, you'd be needing to make sure there was actual space in that. And that would be a conversation you'd have as a principal or a leadership of the school with that um, individual family as if they were, as they were lettering in, but we probably would not be able to really look straight down into the pathway, say a 10th grade year, you'd be lotterying into the school. Because there's just too many particulars and I, we're having a hard enough time finding a lottery program. It just works what we have now. So adding that many more different levels of complication probably isn't going to be something in our lottery system.
Thank you. I guess the core of my question is, are your odds better if you're ahead of the game? You know, are, are your odds of getting into the program that you're interested in better if you are proactive in that eighth to ninth grade transition year?
Yeah.
Than waiting for the normal status quo model? And is that going to be a problem?
So, um, I would say it depends on a lot of factors um, that, that we can't predict. If, how many students are at that school, what we staff at that school, what the capacity is for that school. Um, there's, there's all of those factors that play into lottery that on any given year, we can't predict. Um, we, we have to get to that moment in time and see what those factors are.
Okay, I'll try to. When I was reading the master plan, um, one uh, interpretation I had was that can't talk without them. So if you're, um, it looks like in an ideal academy model, teacher, students progress through from grades nine through twelve with the same set of teachers. Am I reading that correctly?
Um, not necessarily. There, there, year to year, there's a team of teachers that would be a part of that, that student experience. But, um, when we're in a particular academy, so if we're in a health academy, you may have multiple English teachers that teach ninth, well, freshman year, you would have in a freshman academy. But once you get to a health academy, 10th through 12th year, 12th grade year, you may have English, multiple English teachers within that academy because of the number of students in that academy. One English teacher couldn't teach two hundred students, for example, in that school. So you may have um, two to three English teachers within that academy, but they're all working together within that academy, in the sense of that academy, to think about curriculum from the lens of that academy. So maybe there's going to be technical writing as a focus in a health academy versus, um, you know, uh, writing novel type, um, kind of essays, if that makes sense.
Okay, good. I think I answered my question, which is, if a teacher for your ninth grade English class also has been going to become your 10th, 11th and 12th grade English class. But freshman academy is different, but maybe it's possible that you might, you might have a senior.
Teacher in a smaller school, um, for sure. Um, and there are teachers that would potentially teach different grade levels, um, depending on how they're assigned for the year. Um, but, but that happens also currently. Some teachers teach multiple grade levels and by happenstance, you might end up with a separate teacher more than once.
Next, if I could follow up on that a little bit, I I mean, I recall a time when the Anchorage school district didn't recruit at all. Didn't need to, didn't bother. We began to experience shortage and, and it sprang up to where um, I remember when ASD didn't even go down to the teacher payers hook, because there was just no point in it for them. And of course, they began to do that and began to go out of state. Um, and I'm not sure if everything is being done right now. But as we've done this, uh, our vacancy rates, we, we responded, we're doing what we're trying to. But if we actually had a plan to fully staff all the positions that we have money for and are funded for next year. And I don't think anybody knows how to do that. And, and one of the things that's concerning to me, you know, is that I kind of look at anything, it's like a year away, I kind of believe can be done, no matter how big it is. But the idea that we'll add thirty positions. I, I'm not sure where the function, even assuming money's not a problem. And we found thirty more people in staff at district. Uh, and avoid losing the staffing that we've got on. I, and just because we, and that's a opportunity in the standpoint of having this.
I mean, um, I'll let Dr. Johnson go into the native grading mechanics, but I thought it'd be a good time to that the academies were really born, at least in ASD, out of this um, sense of crisis when it comes to the workforce challenges statewide. So the reason why we chose these academies are because we've identified areas that, one, link to high wage, high demand jobs, but two, they're in Alaska because we need to retain our young people. Um, and three, they offer a lot of opportunity for all of our industries to benefit from ASD graduates to directly enter the workforce or after college. And I, I do want to make a specific point that you'll notice that there are five academies specifically with, for education. And this is an opportunity for us to think ahead, think five, six, seven years and invest in ourselves to create pipelines of future early childhood educators, future teachers, future paraprofessionals. So it's kind of like if you build it, they will come sort of thing. And we truly believe um, both for education and for other industries, if we build this compelling talent pipeline, we'll see what we saw in Nashville, which is that, you know, the, the mayor and CEO of the chamber specifically said that no single school member, no single superintendent can take away the academies because this is fundamental to the wellbeing of our economy and the long term. So I know that there's a lot of temptation to focus on the, the day-to-day challenges of staffing, but I do want to zoom out and remind us that one of the, the things about this, this is a long-range statewide plan to tackle workforce challenges. And I think we're one of the only major players doing something in that direction and that's something to be proud of. Uh, talk more about that.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate you bringing up the education pathways. That was actually one of our, our intent focuses, moving toward the aim at the opportunities um, of, of kind of growing your own in education. And one of one of the ways that we want to address some of the shortage around paraprofessionals is that straight to work from high school. Um, I, I guess step into education. And so many of our students may choose to become a paraprofessional um, straight out of high school after their experience in an education pathway. And we all know that there is, um, be there in our staffing vacancies. Um, and they may work themselves through their education program to become a teacher. Um, in particular, there's one school that's really focused um, in terms of their education pathway on special education. Um, another area that we need to see um, for our vacancies. So that is definitely one of our strategies for recruitment that does not solve immediately. Um, but that is also part of the resource management tactic team. It's that recruiting effort to really go after um, the need that we have um, with staffing. But in addition to that, I will say that um, training our own teachers to fill some of the CTE um, needs is also a big part of our plan as well, so that we can even grow our own within our system around um, the CTE.
We also um, have another thing where in our state, we have the alternative certification ability to be able to certify people coming straight out of industry. And through my tactic team on career-focused academies, many of the people on that team said, you know, we, we can find people for you for some of these positions that are ready, that are, can be alternatively certified, work in your schools, help you with the CTE um, actual pathways. And I think that that's an area where other states have been able to get going. We are just getting into that now. Um, just today, um, a school district in Chicago posted a house for sale that was built by two different high schools' construction academies. And the teachers from that came straight out of industry on an alternative certi- certification. So I think we, once we get going, I think not only can we look at that alternative, to grow your own, but I also believe that um, one of the things is that we market this, that hey, come see this. The people that teach in the academies in these different places that we go to, they are very happy. And they love teaching in the academies. And I think if we can add into that satisfaction, satisfaction, you know, we heard from AEA today about job satisfaction. I think this is an area. And I come from a CTE background. I was a shop builder, welding teacher. And this is an area that I believe we can actually teach.
Someone of reasonable intelligence doesn't have especially. You don't have enough time. That's just another reality. I mean, on one hand, it seems then I just said that, no, a year out. Uh, we need to decide this week. Either, um, and, and again, I do remember, I do remember a time when they didn't bother calling second or third day schools, seeing how the students were. That's one of the other things we've done. Sign winners in the spring. Um, and we're still falling behind. But I, I worry about, I, and I, I do, will say, I don't think we have to have every eye out of thoughts on. Well. But there seem to be some going anywhere. I'm worried.
I asked one more question that that, um, that everybody else can say. So one of the things that I flagged was, um, about student experience is on page thirty-one of the Sliding Twitter draft. Um, and it says that all academy students will work through authentic problem-based learning units signed collaboratively by academy teachers during common planning time and academy business partners. So, um, part of my question is logistic. You know, when do the business partners, I mean, do they just come in for that hour during the teacher's collaborative planning time, you know, break during the day? And then like, and this is more philosophical, you are teacher and business partner. And they agree on a lot, maybe we disagree on something, like it's the final day. Teacher or we're just business partner?
So that's a, there's a multi-layered answer to that. Uh, so the first would be that, um, project, project-based learning, um, professional development is something that is on our docket for, um, professional development for all of our students next year. Um, we have a professional development plan. It's just about every ounce of our, our service time next year. Have our teachers work, um, project-based learning, um, how to work effectively as a business team. Um, in the academy's model, um, amongst other things, like teaching on the block, um, and those types of strategies. Uh, so it's, and, and we also have job embedded, um, for classes, other support positions. So, um, the PD plan is really, um, comprehensive. Um, so that's the first layer of that. It's really, um, security that our teachers know what projects is, and then execute it, um, and, and work with it in the classroom. And, um, the other part of it, the, the answer I would say is that each, um, we have industry councils that I've mentioned, uh, those would be district level committees really focused on whatever the particular pathways that are, that are, um, that's what you're saying. They will, um, help guide us around, um, the particular CTE pathway courses, um, that are needed. Um, and at the local school level, there will be advisory councils where if I'm a business, um, person that really wants to, um, volunteer at West Business I could join that advisory council and partner with the super academy. I'd really dive in deeper at that level where I'm planning teachers, um, and, and the like. Um, so I would say that, um, we ultimately as a district, oh, control our classrooms. Um, so, um, that is part of the agreement, I guess presenter as an example, or you're working on a joint collaborative project in the classroom, that teacher, and that's, that's.
I wasn't sure if this was going to continue. So I was going to request a five-minute recess for personal privilege.
Let's do take a five-minute, uh, for everybody. Five minutes.
Doom test, doom audio test.
All the meeting back into order. Um, for, for all the board members and staff, we are having technical difficulties with the audio and video feed. And what they've advised is that we need to eat the microphone. Um, but be right on the microphone when you're speaking and speak loudly. Uh, otherwise, they're just not picking up the audio at all. Not sure if they'll be recorded or broadcast out to anyone that may be watching. So if everyone will remember that, uh, comments that we had. So we are still on, um, discussion of non-action item one-six-two, the appointment of the academies. Think I have any further comments or questions? Seeing no one. Um, that will be, uh, on the agenda for action every next meeting. And apparently my voice is speaking also. Uh, did not have anyone sign up for public comment? Is there anyone here who wishes to make further public comment on the non-agenda?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I think we had another item from non-action.
Um, brought back to discussion of non-action items, memorandum number one-five-eight provisions. Could, I don't know, Mr. Wilson, you speak to that.
I would. I appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Jacobs, for making sure that it was addressed. Um, I would like to, again, I, I don't know what the formal process is, but I would like to postpone this non-action item to, till September. And the reason being is it addresses our um, policy regarding community councils. And our community councils are, some of them are taking a break. They, they take a break June, July, and August. And so they have not, some, some of our community councils haven't even had the opportunity to, um, comment, reach out, show support regarding this policy change. So not, I'm, I'm only asking for us to postpone it until September so that those community councils have the opportunity to, to provide some feedback if they so choose. Um, I don't want it to appear that we're trying to, um, make any policy changes while they're not in session for the summer.
So we do have a motion to postpone memorandum one-five-eight until September. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, if we can, um, get agreement from the movers that we would postpone discussion on this item till the first meeting in September, the first meeting in September, I would second.
Acceptable.
It would be September third. So it's a question for Miss Member Wilson.
Postpone to September third? Yes.
The motion is to postpone memorandum one-five-eight until September third. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this was talked about in governance, and my understanding was this kind, was kind of the tentative end for this item was to provide councils more time to, um, provide feedback. Since governance last met, I had the chance to, that's just at our normal opportunity to the Northeast Community Council. Um, they informed me that they were, um, they had received the, the email regarding the most policy change shortly before their regularly scheduled council meeting. I haven't didn't have time to disseminate it. Um, when I advised that, you know, we were going to consider pushing out, um, any action, they indicated that they weren't, they were, their preference was to call a special meeting to take action because they wanted to be a hundred percent certain that they provided feedback in the form of what sounds like it's going to be a resolution. Um, I think that that's relevant in, in part because it indicates that there are councils who have very strong feelings about, um, our attendance at the, the councils. And so, and at their meetings, and so I think it would be wise to allow ample time to provide feedback and then make the, any adjustments to this policy and just revise wide open. Um, so I would support, um, the post, uh, thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing no hands, someone go fall for both.
Point of order is to postpone to September third, correct?
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yep.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes.
So we have, uh, postponed item one-five-eight till September third. Um, that concludes our discussion on active items. Um, we do have a section I public comment on agenda. I don't see one in the audience wish to speak. Seeing no one approaching the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be free to not stand in the way from anybody's bedtime. But essentially, I just wanted to express gratitude to a lot of individuals. Uh, for example, our fine arts recipients today, wonderful performances, our Tenali Award winners, our graduates, um, still have graduations going on this week. Um, and our wonderful teachers, some of whom retired after many years of service to ASD. And we thank you for your service and dedication to our community. Um, then, uh, of course, to our board members for all that you do and for really pushing administration, keep on refining it to get better. Um, it's a really important part of the process, and today has been very valuable for me. Look forward to continuing our discussions on the topic that we discussed.
Any staff comments? Seems very unlikable. Start with board member comments. Starting with Mr. Higgins.
Thank you. If I can get it close enough, you might be able to hear me. So it shows up. Um, a- as always, I appreciate the comments that people provide doing testimony. And I normally don't respond to it, but I'm going to respond this time to one. When it came to start times, uh, one of the comments was, there's no information out there to support that start times can positively affect academic outcomes. You Google it, and on the first page, you'll see University of Washington, NEA, National American Psychological Association, Institute of Education and Science, National Institution of Health, Harvard University, University of Minnesota, Notre Dame, and the Rand Corporation, all speaking favorably to the impact that the start time changes will contribute. So, um, I just, it, we don't comment or respond to people making, uh, comments when they testify, but that information is being presented to the public, uh, in the way of, obviously, our discussion. And the reason why the board supported this, we're putting kids first. The business community also testified when we came back with the issue of start times and talked about how we're losing people, the, uh, staff or the employees, uh, that are there twenty-eight to thirty-two leaving. This improves academic outcomes just doing. Uh, so for the business community, it was supportive. It was supported with all the research that we did, and that's why I supported it. So it's just difficult when you hear that there's no evidence to it, to simply be silent with that. Cause that was a concern to me. That's just inaccurate. Um, obviously, I want to co- make comments tonight about the Academic Achievement Gap. And, um, yesterday, um, had a meeting and with community. And one of the comments they made there was that with the Academic Achievement Gap was providing more support to the community where they want to have reading programs outside school to help academic outcomes. I encourage them to be more engaged with the, um, Multicultural Education Concerns Advisory Committee, NECAP, and to present that. And I hope that is an outcome. We should be hearing more from the community of how we can address the dramatic differences when you get twenty-eight percent of whites that are proficient math than that level, and seventy percent of blacks that are, you got six, I mean, no, seven, sixty-six percent blacks, seventy percent lives the natives, Asian Hawaiians, the eighty. Um, that simply is not just because it's a, we just need to improve the overall educational issue. That's, it's more than that. So I really appreciate those comments, and I've encouraged them to go forward. We can do more. And then the big thing is to thank you and congratulations to all the different boards that were presented tonight. Um, they really represent the best within the school district, and they deserve the recognition they got. But I gotta end up with one of kind of wacky comment here, but the most impressive to me was all the dancing as well, enthusiasm. And I'm not much of a dancer, okay? I got dragged in one time to two dancing lessons. And on the second one, the person who was the, who in the instruction said, do you even hear the music? I didn't go back again after that, okay? So I really appreciate those who do have that skill, even though it's distant to me. Uh, but I really, uh, really admire the enthusiasm out there, the awards and the recognition for all the good stuff that they've done. And my, uh, my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm grateful for the conversation tonight, um, for administration facilitating really lengthy, um, dialogue. But I, I hope it was constructive. Um, I learned a lot, um, not counting Member Higgins' dancing skills and aptitude. I, um, wanted to second the appreciation for, um, our educators who helped, um, and support staff, um, building administrators, et cetera, who helped get our graduates across the finish line. Um, I went to my last, um, ceremony today at, um, ANCCS, and had our first eighth grade graduate, and, um, it was a great ceremony. They're doing amazing things in the building. Would encourage board members to stop by. I got a, um, an email here I saw during our break that they're planning a community garden, um, 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 on the site of Abbott Loop there. So, uh, kudos to them and their work. Um, I am looking forward to continued conversations regarding the, the initiatives we have going, and then grateful that, um, it sounds like we have an upcoming committee meeting to further refine those. And, um, I, it sounds like also that I may have been named governance chair. That's what I've heard during the break. And so I don't have, know when our next meeting is, but I'll figure that out and be better prepared for next time. Thanks. I don't have know when our next meeting is, but I'll figure that out and be better prepared for next time. Thanks.
Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Mister President. I'm obviously disappointed that after uh over half a year in committee, extensive review and report by the administration, multiple amendments, which I believe I supported most of those. And actual support by the administration on the board uh tonight was not prepared to move forward to for the first time in our district, policies formally recognize uh acknowledge Juneteenth, Earl Harbor Day, nine eleven, Constitution Day, and our flag song. Um but since force multiple members being to send it memorandum one fifty-six back to committee expressed they had no desire to avoid voting on the resolution, I would move to place memorandum one fifty-six on the non-action agenda of our next meeting. Now, there's a motion, uh Mister President. Uh I moved to place memorandum one fifty-six on the non-action agenda of our next meeting. You know, one forty-six. I had to give the decision of the chair.
Chairman made the decision that it cannot be placed on the uh non-action of our next board meeting that it has to go to committee first and
Member Bellamy?
Uh yes.
Point of clarification, a yes vote means we uphold the chair?
Correct.
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
No.
Member Higgins? Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yeah.
Not item will go to governance and come back to the board and support.
Mister Chairman, I mean, Mister President, I move that memorandum one fifty-six be the first item on the agenda of the um upcoming governance meeting.
Um this is a point in the board meeting. And I'll admit I'm not solid on Robert's. I haven't come. Member Higgins?
I I believe that the the decision on the order that it's done by the committee itself, they called that. So I think that the the fact that was that sort of instruction on how to do their job to be
Point of information. If that point of information here is to obtain information, in this case, and then offer some information. Um I think it would be best in terms of Robin's rules if there were motions to make that we move to roll up to a particular section of our agenda to take up any motions. Um a motion to call orders of the day would result in us talking about member comments which are are not under a noticed order of business. So I suppose that if there's any motions to be made, a board member move to go to a particular section of our agenda to then take those down. Thank you.
Put it in a real simple sense.
I I'm just, I I I believe that if we have motions to make, we should go to that section of the agenda via a motion. And then we could make other motions, but right now, member comments move that and uh the motion to call orders of the day would result in us going back to comments.
Thank you, Mister President. As you consider the ruling, I would announce that it's still based on orders of the day to move motions like this. It doesn't exist on our agenda. So to say we should only be under a certain order of the day is is like a catch twenty-two.
This is a valid one, which partly just for the uh hilarity of it. But given the fact that there is no place on the agenda, I'll. Member Bellamy?
So I'm I'm not sure I'm following. Wh- what do you mean there's no place on the agenda to do it? We've already gone through those places. When we when we discussed it as a action item, we pulled it from consent. We got to speak to it then. So I'm 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 not, I'm not real clear on why we are making motions during the cu- the comments part of this meeting.
Um in essence, once we move to send it back to committee.
Right. And I agree with that. I I mean, that's the action that the board took.
Which meant that there really wasn't a place to make a note. And parts to it. Um given that there's that lack of opportunity, I'm going to allow this one now and uh and I think we can consider it as that's the one with board comments. Um and then after this meeting, I'll research a little bit because this is a section of the of the agenda for comments only. Uh I would normally not expect.
I would not.
Out of respect for the fact that there wasn't a place on the agenda where it could have happened. And I'll also say that I'm not certain that the board can really direct the governance committee on their So I'm going to go a step further and rule the motion out of order and say setting the agenda. It's the governance chairs for a negative. Uh and I would hope that would give us by.
I believe the decision of the chair, I believe that this board has the authority to regulate its own committees.
Is there a second? Hearing no second motion.
So back to my comments, um. So last year, this board decided not to record motions failing, failing to get a second uh in the meetings. And uh referred that matter to the governance committee. And several months ago, the governance committee did meet and uh reached the conclusion that our existing policies required the recording of all motions, whether they're seconded or not. Um so that interpretation was made by the governance committee and subsequent to that, the secretary has rightfully gone back and amended those meetings in which failed to comply with our board policy of recording all motions. Um and um I just wanted to to point out that that had occurred. Um the administration at the meeting where that accord reported that the current policy required all motions be recorded. The uh overwhelming body of experts on Robert's rules of order had uh had also reached that same conclusion. And all other school boards in Alaska rejected um the act, you know, not recording motions simply because they weren't recorded or just seconded. Um I want to um thank the governance committee for making that decision and my understanding from the president at that time was that that would be the policy now on is to follow the existing policy of recording all motions. I do um go back in time a little bit and say that I want to reiterate that I feel that uh the failure to obtain a permanent increase in state school funding formula might have been different if school boards throughout the state had gotten together and advocated for some reforms to increase accountability in budgeting and uh in the deliverance of educations to our students. Um there's a whole list that I've previously articulated where possibilities might have agreed upon to entice legislators to provide more funding to school districts uh in a permanent manner in the uh foundation formula. Um ideas such as reinstate the graduation examination. Um I mean, this district could have agreed to drop its current policy of mandating national common core um provisions in our curriculum rather than the statutorily adopted Alaska standards. Uh I think that might have been influential to legislators. And uh we might have made a commitment to negotiate with our staff um within the collective bargaining process to increase the instructional hours provided to our students. Possibly any number of instructional days. It's the combination of the two is the least in the nation. And remind the members that the national average is uh thirty-six states or at least thousand eighty instructional hours per year, but we only have nine hundred in our statutory department. That's a huge gap that our achievement has with in getting an education. Um we could have considered supporting parental rights legislation that was pending with the legislature. That probably would have had a significant influence on on some of the the policymakers there. We uh could have offered a clear plan to use our existing uh measures of academic progress testing to increase classroom academic success. Um I know the superintendent is is working, has explained he's working towards goals like that, but it would have been good to be able to articulate that clear but planned. And I think that might also have been persuasive in our case for additional funding to be included in the formula. Um so I would continue to advocate that school boards statewide develop a package of reforms uh that they can do and they support those things they can't do on their own with additional support for an income to be a statement. Thank you.
I would like to recognize Mrs. Phyllis. She is a she's a teacher at St. High School. She is retiring after fifty years of service. Yes, that was five oh fifty years of commitment and of a commitment educating our students, working with our families. She's amazing. She is Anchorage's longest-serving teacher. On a side note, her husband, Dr. Lance Bowie, had forty-nine years of service in education. So that is, this couple had ninety-nine years of dedicated service to students and families. So thank you, thank you, thank you to Mrs. Bowie, to the many for her many years of commitment to ASD students and families. Be incredibly endeared of this. So I I had to start with that. Uh I also had the privilege of participating in the Keentech High School graduation, Betty Davis, East Anchorage High School, Alaska Middle College, and the West High School Spanish version completion ceremony. All the graduations are always so much fun and it's just so exciting for the futures of future of all of our graduates. Uh ASD worked to expand the senior profiles from four more schools uh than ever before. Team ASD was live from outside and inside the ceremonies, talking to students and staff, uh giving a unique and special look into our graduation celebrations. Uh we have uh have it all on our graduation page. If anybody wants to take a look in YouTube page. And ASD has some, has done some extra stories to close out the school year. A cool story just dropped this evening on Aquarian and tomorrow there will be one on real. So please check it out. I also had the opportunity, I know Member Jacobs mentioned ANCCS, I had the opportunity to attend their fundraiser. Uh and and that way, I just have to say I spent way too much money on the silent auction, but it was fabulous and fun. It was wonderful. Um appreciate all the work that that families do to support that school as well as many other schools and all the work they do. Also wanted to share that governance, finance, and communications committee meetings are all scheduled on Thursday, June sixth. And governance at eleven AM, finance at noon, and communications committee at one PM. And at the communications committee, we will be getting a briefing about this year's legislative session. So please tune in. Thank you.
Member Wilson?
Um I appreciate your reminder. I'm excited to look at the variant video. Um there was an opportunity that uh students at a variant had a school-wide, first school in the state to pilot a program. We're gonna be exact name of sort of like a handshake competition that morphs into being ready to respond to any crazy business situation you might find yourself in. And then um they got to the finalists, they rounded it down to four finalists. And I think President Holloman and I each had the chance to go through the school. There's two of semifinalists, each like really excited to see one. A lot of great soft skills, a lot of great community involvement. So I'll be I'll be keeping in uh to that event.
Amazing shape.
Thank you. The amazing shape. Okay. Um and anyway, graduation to wonderful classes. Schools tomorrow, wishing everyone a successful day. Um congratulations to teachers, to parents, and to students, and all the community members who support them. Um I will be scheduling uh with the grace of other of other board members. Um a specific finance committee meeting on the twenty-ninth at noon. Um to follow up on the academy meeting discussion. Um I hope to, I plan to bring um two options to the committee and have the committee, the committee work through a couple of possibilities and then I would just come back to the board for the normal process of um with a subsequent amendment to be acceptable or not. That's really the process I've chosen. Um that's the best the academy thing to answer plan. Um so part of the board process. So uh thank you all for, thank you to the staff for answering a lot of questions. And to everybody involved for all of the time they put in to generating the question. I don't think that way.
No comments.
I would like to to say in particular about Ms. Bowie, after about forty-five years, she would actually make more higher mistake of that you would by going to school. Several years after that. I I can't think of a true passion of loving your work. And continue to do that. Um and I did get to fill in for Member Bellamy at this point by students uh. And just actually touching back on what we talked about earlier about soft skills, students able to speak on their feet, answer complicated questions. Um prompted the better things that might throw them off. That's part of why we think strangers, they can start things to uh and if the kids are just obviously love their school, they love what they're in. Yeah, their skills are awesome. Uh also, if everyone thought the article in the paper about night school. Small group of people helping a handful of students that can't find another way to get through school. And unfortunately, in some cases, it really comes down on to try to provide what they need. to try and provide what they need, uh, as one more aspect of this very big district that has a lot of pockets of different things. Uh, that, and those people are unaware of it. It's really great to see that paper. Uh, I did get to attend the family partnership correspondence school graduation, uh, because it's forty-seven students, one thing that's really able to do this need of for biography and then just, you know, to cross stage. And again, it just brings back home the variety of kids we have in front of us and how different they are. How different their backgrounds are, but the things that they've been doing while in school, plans they have, uh, just a really wide range, um, but excellent, uh, a really excellent, uh, exercise that I, I don't think our conference applies to that for smaller programs. It's a very new thing. Uh, last week tonight was very much like more than a, a long time ago where we did have student performances, had recognition. The staff, um, we used to do that with every meeting. With COVID, never really restarted. Uh, I know we all enjoyed it on mobile. Or in my voice, but, um, I think it is something that I think I'll bring back on a perhaps more limited basis. Uh, we, we need to recognize our students, uh, as well as our outstanding employees and things like that. So a great time of year, um, a great time to see what's going on, students around the district consolidating success. Any other comments from anyone before we adjourn? Entertained motion to move and seconded, not objection during adjournment.